Hi, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council for Wednesday, May 15th, 2024. I'm Vice Mayor Catherine Way and our mayor is online, Scott Candell on Zoom. And he will be participating tonight, but I'll be guiding the meeting. And but the mayor is also online if you have questions or we have votes to go through. So he has permission to turn his camera off should he need to, but he'll still be available and present during the meeting. Um, oh, and I would like to turn over to our city attorney to confirm this process.
All right, so under the amended rules of the Brown Act for for this kind of participation by teleconference or video conference, the member of the council who wants to participate has to provide a brief statement of the reason for not being able to attend in person. And the city council has to agree to allow that member of council to participate by video conference.
Do we take a vote on that?
Yes.
All right, so I'll offer Mayor Candell to just give a very brief statement as to your need to be on remote.
Okay, I have a back injury and sitting in one of those chairs for four hours probably wouldn't be possible. I could be there, but I'd have to get up every half an hour and walk around and stretch. So I thought it'd be less disruptive if I did it this way.
All right, with that as an explanation, do I have approval? Do we need a regular vote on that?
For the record, I think it's.
Okay, so let's take a roll call vote on approval for this use of our Zoom option for an unexpected medical need.
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Candell?
Yes.
Great, thank you, everyone. This is Larkspur, we follow the follow the letter of the law, so.
Just to just for the benefit of everybody, because Councilmember Candell is participating remotely under this set of rules for the Brown Act, which are there's another set of rules where this doesn't apply, but under these rules, members of the public also have to be allowed to provide public comment via Zoom.
Okay, great, so now that we've set that up, let's do regular roll call.
Councilmember Andre?
Here.
Councilmember Paulson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Way?
Here.
Mayor Candell?
I'm here.
And if you're able, please stand and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Great, that brings us to the second item on our agenda tonight, which is a very full agenda, is public comment. So public comment is for matters that are not on the agenda, which we will be discussing later in detail. And please address the city council with your name and if you would like your address. And you have about three minutes. Do we have anyone in the audience first who would like to provide public comment and then we'll go to Zoom? Yes, please, join us.
My name is Chuck Jones.
Come to the mic first because we are recording and we can't hear you unless you're there.
My name is Chuck Jones. I live at 140 Magnolia Avenue between Baltimore and Alexander. On Sunday, we had a friend over for dinner. She parked out front. We heard a loud crash. A car had come whipping down the road and smashed into her when the driver lost control, smashed into her car. Nobody was in it. She was going fast enough to drive the parked car up completely onto the sidewalk and into the neighbor's driveway. Broke off her rear wheel. And the car, as far as I know, is totaled. In March, somebody was coming up the hill and hit the the pickup truck that's always parked across the street from us. And damage that it was gone for a month being repaired. In February, somebody was came roaring down the street and hit our new neighbor's car and damaged that. In the fall of last year, somebody was parked and hiking up off of Piedmont. And somebody came whipping around that corner and smashed into their parked car. So it's it's a habit of some drivers to take that stretch of the road quickly. And if they look at their cell phones, which many of them are apt to do, and they lose control, then there is an accident. In addition, there's a there are two school issues. One, the high school and the middle school kids come from Baltimore in the canyon and go across there. And there's also the Marin primary where kids are taken by their parents up there. And they always, according to my neighbor, who's got a daughter in Marin primary, they always have to fight the traffic to get across. So I have a couple of solutions that I would recommend to you based upon the policeman's statement at the scene of the accident on Sunday, who said it was not their responsibility to do anything about it, but the cities. Number one is station a police car on that street regularly taking with with a speed gun and giving out tickets to speeders. I don't think that'll be a long term solution. Number two is relatively inexpensive. Put stop signs on Magnolia at both Baltimore and at Alexander to to slow down the traffic who love to whip up and down that street. Number three would be to get it one of those signs that tells you how fast you're going and put it there permanently. And number four, get one of those signs that take a do the same thing, but take a picture of the speeding cars and give out tickets. So that's in order of increased cost. But I think it's a main thoroughfare. It's not just the impact those people who live on the street, but it impacts people who go up and down that street, coming in and out of Danville, Danville, where I used to live, Larkspur. And it's been said that that we don't want to impede any emergency traffic going up that street. But if you think about the coming out of the firehouse and going down, they had two lights before they can get anywhere. And they can certainly get around stop signs or whatever going up there. So I urge you to take this into consideration, not just for the people who live there, but for everybody who comes into Larkspur, having to drive on a what appears to be a dangerous street.
Yeah.
Now, if necessary, I will be happy to buy a radar gun and track speeds and make notations and present that to you, but I'd like to see you all address this yourselves and do something meaningful instead of just putting up those crosswalks, which you may know have been hit several times and had their bollards knocked completely off their pins.
Right, so well, thank you for that. And I I appreciate your firsthand account of what transpired.
You're welcome. Love to see you all do something about it. Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience?
Vice Mayor, could I ask a quick question?
Sure, of the of the speaker or?
No, Steph. Steph, I have a question for staff that I think it's even on today's agenda. We have a traffic traffic study that the city is going to embark on. And I was wondering if the area the speaker just spoke about would be part of that traffic study.
I know it's a different segment of Magnolia.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to present public comment? Hi, welcome. Can you tell us your name?
Hi, good evening. My name is Tara Topia. I'm the superintendent of the Tamil Pious Union High School District. Thank you. Thank you to all the council members for allowing me to speak. And thank you for your service for all you do to our for our community. As I said, I'm Tara Topia. I'm the superintendent of the Tam Piot Tamil Pious Union High School District. We call it TAM. And as you likely know, the TAM district bond, Measure A narrowly fell short of the 55% in the March election. As we look towards a potential revised bond in the fall, we are presenting at school board and city council meetings to provide you with information and our next steps. And we are also asking for community feedback and we will send a Google form that at your via email for that kind of feedback. Measure A was a $517 million bond that would have provided the funding for the extensive facility needs that we face in the TAM district. These needs were identified through a comprehensive facilities plan process that included significant community input. The funds for Measure A were identified by need and the goal of the facilities master plan and the bond was to ensure that we have comparable facilities across our sites. Our schools have varying needs with TAM and Redwood needing the most significant work, largely because they both have buildings that by state law cannot be remodeled, therefore they must be replaced. Archie Williams, by contrast, doesn't have any such buildings at this time. Measure A would have provided the funds for four buildings at Redwood High School, including a new cafeteria to keep up with the new state mandate that we provide free breakfast and lunch to all students. The total cost of the four buildings, including classrooms, a cafeteria and multipurpose purpose space was $106 million. The cafeteria was just one of those four buildings and was slated to cost $23 million. We still need an improved and larger cafeteria as we serve approximately 750 meals a day at Redwood. And there is little to no indoor seating area for our students. At the April 30th board meeting, staff presented to the board with a scaled back proposal that addresses the most critical needs at each site while making acceptable compromises. The board asked the district to engage in pulling our community with this new proposal, which would be a $440 million bond, which is approximately a 15% reduction. Many of our facilities are in need of urgent repair. And as you know, the bonds are the only mechanism through which school districts can raise the facilities. We are eager to hear from our community and appreciate being able to take this opportunity to speak with you. I'll follow up with an email and we are happy to come back at any time or speak with anybody.
So I suggest following up with the mayor and maybe the city manager to see if there is an opportunity in the future to put that on the agenda so that we can actually engage more in conversation about it.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else? David?
So good evening, Vice Mayor Way and council members and staff. I'm David Mahler. I live here in Larkspur. And I'm representing the 24 members of the Larkspur Climate Group tonight, all of whom are Larkspur or Green Bay residents. So Larkspur City Council adopted a climate action plan back in July of 21, almost three years ago. And that plan includes a comprehensive implementation plan in the back of it, if you've taken a look at that. And that plan, implementation plan identifies the lead department, the timeframe, the city staff time, the expected greenhouse gas reductions and even metrics for each of the many actions that are listed in the climate action plan. And then a few months later, in October of 21, Larkspur adopted its climate emergency declaration and which, among other things, commits the city council to quote, regularly assess Larkspur's greenhouse gas reduction goals, actions and policies, and provide public facing progress reports and metrics at least annually. So to my knowledge, so we're looking at almost three years now. There's only been one update on Larkspur's greenhouse gas emissions. That was about a year ago in May. And that report was based on data that was lagging by two years. And to my knowledge, there has not been a public facing like status report on implementation of the actions in the climate action plan. So on behalf of the members of the Larkspur Climate Group, I'd like to request that the council ask staff to prepare and publicly present an update on implementation of the actions in Larkspur's climate action plan. And ideally to reflect those actions to the extent feasible in Larkspur's budget planning and strategic planning processes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work on that issue, too. Anyone else in the chamber like to say anything in regards to public comment? All right, is there anybody, any hands online?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our Zoom audience members. And there's no public comment.
All right, thank you for participating. At this time, I'll close public comment. That moves us to number three, which are presentations and proclamations. It looks like tonight we have two. And would do we need a staff report on that or who is planning on reading them?
Well, the mayor's not here, so that I think we'll get assigned to Madam Vice Mayor. I did want to note that there actually is a actionable component to these two proclamations. This is a methodology whereby the council is going to decide if it wants to express particular sentiments on behalf of the city and it does involve the display of items at City Hall as a result.
So the first proclamation is 3.1, which is to approve the display of the rainbow flag during the month of June. The proclamation is, whereas the city of Larkspur is a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and questioning community whose members live, attend school and work in the city. Whereas the city of Larkspur is committed to supporting visibility, dignity and equity for all members of the community and preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identification. Whereas in honor of the 1969 Stonewall uprising in Manhattan, June has become a symbolic month in which the LGBTQ plus community and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride, with cities across the country recognizing and celebrating June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Whereas the rainbow flag has been recognized since the 1970s as a symbol of LGBTQ plus pride. Whereas members of the city council of the city of Larkspur have requested that the city council approve the flying of the rainbow flag for the month of June each year to further symbolize the city's viewpoint in celebrating the diversity of and support of the city's LGBTQ plus community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Scott Candell, or I, Catherine Way, Vice Mayor of the city of Larkspur, do hereby approve the display of the rainbow flag, pride flag for the month of June each year as a reflection of the city's views. I'm bringing that forward to the council first for comment. Is there any comment of the city council about that proclamation?
Yeah, I endorse it. I say we move it forward.
I agree. Mayor Candell?
I agree.
Great. As a proclamation, Attorney Sky, do we need a public comment on a proclamation?
Since it's an item on the agenda, you should see if there's public.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on that proclamation? All right, seeing none. And any hands raised on Zoom that would like to speak on that proclamation?
Looking for any raised hands from our Zoom audience members. And there's no public comment.
All right, then I'll take an approval of the display of the rainbow flag during the month of June. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second. Roll call for that or should we just do eyes? All right, oh, because it's unsafe. Do a roll call.
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Candell?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you, everyone. That brings us to our second proclamation, 3.2. A proclamation of the Larkspur City Council approving the display of the Redwood High School decor. This is a new one for us. I haven't done this one. Whereas Redwood High School is one of the public high schools serving Larkspur. Whereas the city of Larkspur is committed to supporting Redwood High School in its mission to enrich the lives of Larkspur's high school aged students and families. Whereas from time to time, students and parents connected to Redwood High School plan citywide activities to express school pride. And whereas the city of Larkspur desires to support and participate in such activities, now therefore be it resolved that the city council authorizes the city manager to have Redwood High School decor on display at city facilities during school pride activities as an expression of the city's ongoing support for Redwood High School and its mission. Do I have comment from any of my council members in regards to proclamation 3.2?
Again, I support it.
I support it as well. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on proclamation 3.2, which is displaying Redwood High School gear, I guess it is? No, great. Anyone online?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our Zoom audience members. There's no public comment.
Mayor Candell, any comment?
No comment.
All right, I'll take a motion to pass a proclamation for the Larkspur City Council to approve the display of Redwood High School decor.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Candell?
Yes.
Great, looking for those cheerlier pom poms going up. And we're moving on to number four, approval of the consent calendar. We have seven items on the consent calendar and I know our city attorney would like to make a comment on 4.5. So we're pulling 4.5. Are there any council members who would like to pull any of the consent items? Okay, seeing none? Is there anybody in the public who'd like to discuss any of the consent items? Seeing none, and I see no hands raised, right, Allison? Great, so would you please refer us to the comments on 4.5?
Yes, thank you. State law has for some time required an oral announcement regarding changes to executive compensation for cities, and that includes the city manager. And since item 4.5 is an amendment to the city manager's contract, I'm just going to provide a brief summary of the significant changes to satisfy the state law requirement. The primary amendments to the salary include the to the contract include the following, that the city manager's compensation starting in July 2024 and July 2025 will be adjusted commensurate with the scheduled adjustments for the city's management unit. For 2024, that's 3%. And in 2025, that's 3%. So with starting in July, city manager's annual salary will be $261,379. Beginning in July 2025, it will be $269,220. Additionally, the contract awards the city manager a performance base bonus based on previously identified performance goals and maintains that structure for next year. And then additionally allows the city manager to cash out, convert up to 80 hours of accrued vacation leave to direct compensation. And that completes my oral announcement.
Thank you for that. If there are no further comments on the consent calendar, I would refer to some two public comments that came in on 4.4. One from our esteemed council member Larry Chu. And then a memo that references some of his comments that had come in, and those are posted on the agenda online to be viewed. So if there are no further comments by the council, I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar. So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Candell?
Yes.
We're dialed in tonight. Look at us. That brings us to five. City manager, city managers' report, please.
Have two items I wanted to highlight. I suspect the first one, some of you might be thinking about as well. But in case folks in the community aren't aware, Bonner Shopping Center in conjunction with the Kentfield Green Bay Historical Society is hosting the Community Spring Fair. And it's going to be on Saturday, May 18th from 11:00 to 2:00 PM. I'm highlighting it because they were gracious enough to provide us with a table during the event. And our own Elise Simonean, Community Development Director, and some of her staff will be there with information about the draft housing element and the draft general plan and invite the community who may still have questions or want to provide feedback to staff. It's a wonderful opportunity for you to get a one on one conversation with some of our staff. But please also go because it can be a beautiful event. Lot of a lot of folks are coming. And I think it'll be a great, great time. And then secondly, trying to do a little better job to highlight some of the exciting programming that the library's been instituting. And those of us who learned a lot about Sir Francis Drake a few years ago, we'll recall Dewey Livingston speaking to us and giving us some of the history. He's actually coming to the library on Saturday, June 8th, and he's going to be talking about Larkspur History Talk on Islands in the Marsh and how Redwood High School came to be instead of a version of Coney Island.
Oh, he's great.
I encourage folks who might be interested in the fact that Larkspur almost hosted Marin's version of Coney Island to come and and hear this interesting talk. And with that, turn it back to you, Madam Vice.
Great. Are there any questions of that report? Anything, Scott, question wise?
Not for me.
All right. Terrific. So that brings us to number six, council members' reports and comments. I guess I'll start with you.
So I thought I'd come back to the council and the public to talk a little bit about transportation. So I was at the SMART board meeting today and am going to the TAM board meeting next Thursday. And it's the same budget season that that they have that, you know, we're currently going to explore tonight. And and I kind of bring this up for my colleagues and also the public to provide feedback because sometimes we go to our assignments and just do our thing, but there's some really important issues. So just starting with SMART, they will be starting a shuttle service on the beginning of June. So in a couple of weeks, the on demand shuttle will be riding people from the SMART train to the Larkspur ferry during the week. It'll be operating from seven in the morning until six. And then what's sort of needed, it can only carry 12 people. And I think roughly, you know, five or 10 times that number disembark from SMART. But once it's there waiting for the next train, it operates like Uber or Lyft. So you can get around to Larkspur Landing or, you know, clearly, you know, any anything back to the train to try to solve the last mile solution as much as possible. The cost is $1.50. And there's an app, so they're trying to really make this like like Uber and Lyft. And on the weekends, it'll also go to the malls, the Village and Corte Madera Town Center, as well as Larkspur Landing. And that'll operate between 8:30 in the morning and 7:30 at night. And so this was piloted already in Santa Rosa for the Santa Rosa Airport. It's about a one and a half mile connection. And, you know, these sort of things really disincentivize use of public transport. People will just say the car is easier. And a lot of people say I'd love to use the SMART, but that gap to the ferry or, you know, the timing, et cetera. So we're, you know, really seeing ridership go up with SMART, particularly because of the discounts. And this is yet another step to try to encourage it. But that being said, you know, any public, you know, input about what the value of this this rail service is or how we can do better, I would love to hear. You can participate in the meetings. Then on TAM, just as a, as a, you know, 30 second, because I'm new on this since council members Haroff and Carol passed it on to me. The TAM budget is roughly double our city's budget. It's about 40 million to 45 million, depending on taxes. And more than half of it goes to Marin Transit. So they basically just cut a check and the Marin Transit buses do their thing, also solving last mile solution, public transport. About about a quarter goes to maintenance, you know, keeping the roads in good condition. And then about 11 and a half percent go to safe routes to school. So all the crossing guards, we have 104, we're going to cut it to 96. But then the part that I'm really focusing is congestion and only 7% of the budget goes to congestion. And there's an awful lot of interesting work and possibilities. And we know the Sir Francis Drake and the 101 and some of these issues. So I just opened this up to my colleagues and to the council. If you have input, I'm really there to try to, you know, partner and collaborate with the other jurisdictions and see what we can do to ease congestion and increase, you know, safe routes and and, you know, public transport in Larkspur and Green Bay and in Marin in general. So that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Andre?
Great, thank you. I have three items. One, several of us attended the Golden Gate Bridge District's meeting last night about a potential $75 million parking structure that they might build at Larkspur Ferry Terminal. There were a lot of display boards with a lot of information about their projections for ridership, drawings, I think at least three or four different options for what the parking structure might look like and where it might be located. So it was very interesting. They're, this is very early in their process. Well, actually, they are restarting a process that they started in 2018 and then got sort of sidelined because of the pandemic. And so now they're picking this back up. So they will be holding community workshops later in the fall where they will be soliciting public input and comments. And so we'll continue to or I will continue to attend some of those meetings and hopefully just report back. But I do encourage any resident who is interested in this topic because it is going to be an expensive and large project that will really impact Larkspur residents that, you know, we all, if you're interested in public comments and having input in the project to attend some of those workshops. Secondly, I listened to a conference call last week hosted by ACTARA, which is a climate action group based out of Palo Alto. And it was a call that was sponsored by Marin Clean Energy, the Peninsula, Peninsula Clean Energy, San Jose, San Jose Clean Energy, Silicon Valley Clean Energy and so forth, and many other groups, organizations in the Bay Area. And the keynote speaker with was Mark Jacobson, who is a Stanford professor of civil engineering and director of their atmosphere and energy program. And, you know, he laid out a really compelling case for why residents, you know, really should be making the switch to electric appliances versus gas appliances. And he really gave a great overview on, you know, what's happening with with the California grid and how much of it is renewable. For instance, he said, you know, 98 to 99% of California's energy is now clean and renewable energy, meaning solar, wind and water. And we produce 150% of of energy that we need every day. And some of that gets stored in batteries and some of that gets sent out, exported outside of California. And that number also doesn't include. And that number also doesn't include twelve percent of energy that's um, being generated by rooftop solar. So I thought it was a really compelling um, case for why, you know, we should be thinking about uh, electrification. Uh, but then he was followed by like eight to ten other speakers um, who were elected officials or people in the planning departments of um, jurisdictions around the Bay Area. And it was very interesting to hear about what sort of ideas and what sort of uh, measures were being implemented and their experience with, you know, and their challenges and their experience with uh, implementation of some of these uh, policies. So a little bit later in the year, um, I would like to, you know, think about with council, like what are some of the things we might be able to do to uh, further some of our climate action goals? Um, you know, perhaps after we cleared the budget, I'd really like to take a look at that. And then um, lastly, one last thing, uh, we have um, there, there are going to be some seats, Kevin, former council member Kevin Carroll's uh, seat is up for election in November and the Marin uh, Women's Political Action Committee is uh, hosting uh, a workshop, uh, a series of two workshops for people who might be interested in running. And uh, they will have, they have a great lineup of speakers who will be talking to people about um, and everything from fundraising to endorsements to organizing volunteers. Um, and so if anyone's interested in potentially running or maybe volunteering for a campaign, I think this is a great way to um, get an introduction um, to the political process.
Thank you. And they can reach out to you or me about that.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Candell, anything?
Uh, just real quick, I wanted to point out that uh, as it is budget season, it's budget season for police and fire as well. Uh, there's been ongoing meetings about uh, about that and I'll probably bring it up during the budget portion of this meeting, but I think uh, we as a city are going to have to have some philosophical conversations and choices that we make uh, as, you know, we no longer have the budget surpluses that we had uh, in the past. We're, we're going to have to decide what our priorities are and uh, and, and I think uh, in, in the past, what happens, the budget kind of comes and we, we voted up or down. I'm, I'm going to ask uh, you know, in the upcoming year that we put a little more front-loading onto the philosophical aspects of it. Uh, and try to uh, discuss where we want our money to go um, ideologically. That's all. Thank you.
Go forward to that. Um, all right, uh, and just I'll close by saying last week I attended uh, Central Marin Fire Authority Board Meeting and the Central Marin Police Authority Board Meeting um, with councilmember and um, Andre and we did pass both budgets. Um, and we had some very good conversation about the challenges that fire and police are having nationwide and um, particularly in our community with recruitment and retention. And um, I think that speaks to what the mayor just said, that this is an issue that we are going to all be um, needing to have a very serious conversations going forward about how we continue to support our first responders as a community. Um, that was a, there's more to come on that and we'll have some presentations tonight, but um, we'll be uh, have, having some additional meetings this summer about it too. Um, lastly, I am the li- uh, the liaison to the Larkspur Community Foundation and they um, are an organization of residents who have been um, tasked with raising funds for the, for all sorts of um, improvements to the community um, that they provide um, seed money for in all different types of um, projects from the parks to um, the native plant restoration, et cetera. They are hosting the return of the Larkspur um, Rose Bowl Dance on September twenty-first. And it will be at a Scowl um, Winery property. And if those of you who've been longtime residents of Larkspur know, the last time we held a dance was in twenty-ten, so it's been a long time coming. And I'm only bringing this up because they asked me to announce that tickets will be on, starting on sale on Monday. And um, just to look at the LarkspurCommunityFoundation.org website, I don't know anything else about the ticket process, except that I know it will be sold out quickly. And it's a limited number of tickets, so if you're interested, put it on your calendar for Monday. LarkspurCommunityFoundation.org. Great. That brings us to our um, item number seven, which is a public hearing. Uh, introduction of ordinance ten seventy-five, amending chapter six point three zero of the Larkspur Municipal Code to amend the sunset provisions of the Just Cause Eviction and Tenant Protection Regulations. Do, we have a staff report, please?
Uh, yes, Madam Vice Mayor, Council, the um, at your last meeting, you had a discussion about the sunset provision in the uh, ordinance that governs rent stabilization. And in the context of that conversation, staff inquired uh, if you wanted to align it with the Tenant Protection Act that had been a discussion that had occurred, but ultimately when the date was uh, inserted by the council, they, you, you voted insert a different date. At your last meeting, you said, yes, you did want to align the ordinance with the Tenant Protection Act's date for a sunset. And you indicated you wanted to do the same for the other ordinance that's part of this package, which is the eviction protection ordinance. And so uh, earlier on the consent calendar, you completed the process to align rent stabilization, moving the sunset date from December thirty-one, twenty-thirty to January one, twenty-thirty. And this public hearing is to decide to uh, do the first reading to start the process to do the same thing for the eviction protection ordinance.
Okay, so in summary, we are correcting and verif- and um, correcting a date that we uh, had inadvertently um, not coordinated. So are there questions of the city manager on this matter? Uh, Mayor Candell, do you have a question on this matter? It's pretty, okay. I got it. I, I got your no shake. Um, since this is a public hearing, I need to open it up to the public, so I will open up to the public for comments or questions about um, the uh, changing of the date of our ordinance. Are there any questions or comments from the audience in the odd here? No? Anybody online?
Looking for any raised hands from our Zoom audience members. And there's no public comment.
All right. So I'll bring it back to us. Do we have any further questions? All right, then I'll take a motion to approve um, item amending uh, ordinance ten seventy-five, amending chapter six point three. I'll make a motion.
And I'll second that.
Allison, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Andre.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way.
Yes.
Mayor Candell.
Yes.
Great. That brings us to our meat of the meeting tonight, which is our business meeting. Um, looking at the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So uh, the opening business item eight point one, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and we begin by a review of the preliminary budget. I think we have some additional handouts and I would like um, the staff to start us off on that.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I'm going to do a little housekeeping as our team gets set up for this uh, part of the meeting. So uh, this is the, what I would call the workshop component of the budget process. Uh, as a reminder, we've over the years established a four-part process to do our budget uh, evaluation. We started off with a presentation from department heads about accomplishments in the current fiscal year and goals for the next fiscal year. Uh, we followed that up at our last meeting with a discussion of economic trends. Some of the things that your staff's tracking that we're concerned about. Uh, and then now we will do this working meeting. During this working meeting, it's your chance to really dive into the budget and ask us questions. You're not making decisions tonight, but you can and should give us direction if there are portions of the budget that you want to see uh, reflected differently, or you may want to engage your colleagues and/or members of the public in different elements and discussions about the budget. You do this in the, in the, uh, outside the constraint of a public hearing, so you can be a little more free-flowing in your discussion in, in a workshop format. We have several components this evening. Uh, I'll be doing a presentation with the Administrative Service Director Amelia Gabrielle, and then we will be your primary respondents throughout this uh, session. Uh, but I know from past sessions with the council that some of the council members have wanted to have a little ability to make comments about the police and fire budgets, even though those are not under your direct purview for the benefit of the public. Two members of the city council sit on the police and fire councils. Those organizations have adopted their budgets and the numbers that you see in the budget, preliminary budget, reflect what was adopted. That said, I think you even heard the mayor sort of signal that the, the year and a theme of the upcoming fiscal year is a revisiting of our priorities uh, in light of budget constraints. And so um, I thought it would be a good idea to have representatives of Central Marin Police and Fire come and do a brief summary of what's in their budgets and what they're wrestling with, so you have a sense of that. Uh, and I will introduce them after we do the city presentation of the city budget. And you have copies of these presentations. They've been posted online, so folks can look at them as well. I also wanted to note that we posted a couple of items at the request of the, of members of the council that are up online. One was that we revised the budget sheets to include our forecast for where we're going to close at year end. That's a forecast. I'm certain it'll be off here and there by dollars, but we did, I feel we're pretty accurate this late in the fiscal year where we're going to land. Um, and that gives you a better chance to compare projected actuals against next year's budget. The other request we had was to provide more detail uh, in a table of the uh, activity that's been occurring and that's proposed for the sales tax special funds that we're going to talk about this evening. So you'll, you should have that in front of you. It's posted online for the benefit of the public who want to review that. Although we tend to focus this evening quite a bit on the general fund, within the umbrella of the general fund are a number of special funds that over the years we've tended to talk to us uh, in as sort of standalone aspects of what we do. Uh, and so this evening, please dive into those special funds as they interest you. In particular, we have the transient occupancy tax fund. Uh, and then we have the, the three sales tax funds. Those are probably the foremost ones that um, you might want to discuss this evening. We'll probably will need a break after that because then we're going to invite Julian Skinner up and we're going to dive into the uh, capital improvement plan, uh, which you will also be adopting when we go to public hearing. Um, these items are related, they fuel each other, and so uh, there will be some cross discussion, I suspect, as we move through all these presentations. That presentation is posted online for folks who want to follow along. Public comments came in, they're posted online. Lastly, posted online, I wrote a memo that conveys to you what my anticipated recommendations in the final budget will be with respect to the sales tax measures. And they incorporate feedback that I received from the Oversight Committee, which is part of the process that the council created. So that's your housekeeping overview of what you're in store for. What I would suggest is as we're doing our presentations this evening, because it's more of a workshop, if you want to stop us and get clarity, that's the, that's the way to do it. Um, and uh, um, Ms. Gabrielle, I'm going to make sure now comes up and joins us up here. She has real-time data available in the accounting system, so if we really need to dive into something, we can.
So what would you think if we had the presentation on the Central Marin Police and let um, Captain Cleely not have to sit through the rest of all of our things, if that?
I'm, I'm okay with that. I do have some comments in my presentation that I might bring forward if, if you, but I'm, I'm sure Captain Cleely would love to get to leave a little earlier. But I know he loves us so much that as he's driving home, he's going to have the Zoom going through his car audio so that he can listen to all the discussion.
Yeah, I just would like, I mean, we are going to be, all need to deep dive into this. There has been already a presentation to the Central Marin um, Police Authority Council and i- in regards to that budget. And are, are you all right? If we switch it around, would you be all right in presenting first? And then you, you're welcome to stay the rest of the night, but I, I honor that you also have a day job. Is that all right with everyone? Uh, Mayor Candell? If we just switch and have that presentation? And then we're going to uh, have a Central Marin Fire presentation?
Unfortunately, the chief hadn't hoped to come and had a conflict at the last minute, so I can go through that presentation.
Um, or we can wait on that one, because you'll be here anyway.
Or we can do that on June fifth, you know, and as a reminder, um, I'm one of the members of the Management Committee, so these budgets are ultimately presented through the Management Committee. So I'd be happy to also answer questions. I just can't answer the operational questions that the captain can answer.
So at least we know we can have Central Marin uh, Police Budget Discussion because we have that here and we do have a representative. So if it's all right with the rest of my council and if you feel you're prepared, if you want to, we can um, since it's not agendized in a particular order, is, I don't believe it is. You can join us and we'll go over this brief presentation and ask questions.
And I guess I would just say as a precursor, as the captain comes up, remind, this budget was adopted and as a member agency, we are obligated now to pay a calculated share of the budget. That's what's shown in our preliminary budget for Larkspur is that amount that we're obligated to pay.
Yeah. Great.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to uh, present our budget to you. As uh, previously mentioned, our budget was uh, approved and adopted last week. Um, I'm going to go over very briefly what I would consider a very in-depth and detailed police budget. Um, but for purposes of keeping this as brief as I can, I'm just going to focus on the highlights. But as uh, City Manager Schwartz had mentioned, if you have any questions or comments, please just feel free to interrupt me at any moment. Um, this first slide here is just an overview, the structure of field operations. What field operations consists of is from the chief all the way down to our parking enforcement personnel. Uh, this is primarily the, the uh, employees that you see in uniform driving the marked black and white police vehicles. The Support Services Division consists of, again, from the chief on down, um, primarily the non-uniform detectives and our professional staff that handle records and evidence.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but uh, the online version, all I'm seeing is Central Marin Police uh, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. I'm not seeing the uh, smaller slides.
Okay. Thank you. Allison's going to check that out.
Okay, thank you.
This is where you get to tell a few jokes, you know, like ob jokes, firefighter jokes, fill the time.
Chief Martin's not here, so it wouldn't be fair.
Wouldn't be fair. Let us know, Scott, when you can see.
Because yeah, well, 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 online, all, all we can see is the uh, the central, uh, you know, your first slide.
The first slide, okay.
Hasn't gone to the second slide yet.
Okay.
So this might mean we want to hit a pause because we have a lot of slides tonight, so.
Okay, so I think um, while we have some technical difficulties for a minute, maybe we'll take a, a brief um, uh, a gen- adjournment, that's the word I'm looking for.
Recession.
Recession, brief recess, um, while we do some technical um, work here. So we are taking a brief recess and we'll return as soon as our technical difficulties have been passed.
Returning.
Terrific. Thank you for your patience, uh, everyone who's listening online or, and who's been here in the audience. We're returning back to our regularly scheduled um, city council meeting of uh, May fifteenth after some technical difficulties have been repaired. Please let us know, um, Mayor Candell, if there's anything else that doesn't come through on your end.
Got it. No, much, much better. Thank you.
Great. All right, thanks. Um, Captain, keep going.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Um, as I mentioned before, uh, the Support Services Division consists of the detectives and our professional staff, which uh, consists of the Records Division and Evidence Division. The Central Marin Police uh, budget uh, consists of a funding formula um, and some evenly split items. As you can see on the left-hand side, there are seven major components to our budget. Administration, Communications, Investigations, the SRO and the Juvenile Detectives, Field Operations and Traffic. The first three are evenly split between the three member agencies. So a third, a third, a third. And then the other ones are based on a funding formula. And so what the funding formula is, is on the right-hand corner, thirty-three point seven one percent of that is Larkspur's share and twenty-seven point eight six is Corte Madera and thirty-eight point four three is San Anselmo. And so uh, approximately a decade into Central Marin, um, there were slight variances in the percentage shares between the three member agencies. And so what the Management Committee and the Police Council decided was to um, basically lock in those percentages because at that point, we had a very good idea of what the rates were going to be and they hadn't changed much. So we locked those in. And what the funding formula basically consists of is on the lower right-hand corner, fifty-five percent of that is calls for service, twenty-five percent are total crimes. And so those are um, the part one, part two crimes that I, we Twenty-five percent are total crimes. And so those are um, the part one, part two crimes that I, we present. At the annual reports, ten percent are total citations and then the other ten percent are accidents that occur. And so when you factor all that in, like I said, thirty-three point seven one uh, is Larkspur's share. This here is an overview of our budget. So on the top half, it shows the revenues and then on the bottom half shows the expenses and it's. It's pretty small and blurry, but our uh, proposed, or I'm sorry, our adopted twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Is sixteen million, three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars and change. Uh, this slide here uh, represents the significant increases and the significant decreases. To the adopted twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And I won't go through all these in, in detail, but. Uh, I think the explanations are pretty self-explanatory. This is a, a more detailed breakdown of the revenues. As you can see, in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. It shows the three shares um, of the three member agencies, Larkspur being uh, four point nine and, and change. And it basically breaks down how the funding for our budget is, is, is shown. And lastly, the expenditures. So these are what uh, comprise of the uh, sixteen point three eight six million dollars. That is the Central Marine Police Budget. And again, it's those seven major areas, Administration, Communications, Investigations. Juvenile, Field Ops and Traffic. And uh, the Community Services is uh, Larkspur and San Anselmo share. That's our newly formed community service officers. That are out there primarily doing parking enforcement. And that's pretty much it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but if anyone has uh, would like to see our budget in further detail, you're more than happy to. Uh, go onto our Central Marine Police website and the full budget is there and you can.
It's a hundred and fifty-eight pages.
Very, very in-depth, yes.
And did you have?
I, I would like to just make a couple of illustrative comments for the benefit of folks who weren't at the Police Council Meeting. Over the last several years, the reserves for the police authority have grown. Much more than are required by the policy and it's happened for a few reasons. We had a couple of revenue streams that we weren't budgeting for expenditures because we were still trying to understand their. Trends and patterns, uh, particularly a few things that flow in from the state. We have a better handle now on what those monies are, but most significantly. Um, we've had a longstanding practice of funding vacancies and um. The police have been facing an employee shortage. This is a statewide problem.
Nationwide.
Uh, nationwide problem, that's true. Uh, and um, it's been particularly challenging for Central Marin. And so as part of uh, recognizing that we'd had a, a significant number of vacancies for. A few years now, uh, during the most recent round of bargaining, we worked collaboratively with our. Uh, Police Officers Association to develop uh, competitive rates of pay that we felt, feel will. Help with both recruitment and retention. That hits this budget immediately. So we will, we wanted to soften that blow. At the Management Committee for the Member Agency Contributions. So we did a deep dive with the help of Ms. Gabrielle, who is also the. Finance Director for Central Marine Police and identified every pot of money where we were comfortable. That we had overfunded with excess revenue. And so we put a lot of that surplus money in to. Cushion the first year of this increase and give us time to smooth it out over the life of the. A new employment contract, which is three years. I suspect and, and am committed to uh, further discussions with the chief and the captain about. Other ways we might build more relief into the budget because uh, we're going into a more of an austerity period. At Larkspur and I think our member agencies are uh, in the Central Marine Police are similarly tracking. Along those lines. And I think a big part of that will be uh, how do we adequately fund the police to ensure that they can continue? To try to build back their ranks, but also recognize that uh, recruit, that vacancies have become sort of a norm in the organization. And maybe funding all those vacancies isn't necessary. That'll be something we'll be talking about all through the year. Um, and I think you'll hear a strong commitment from the Management Committee, from the chief and the captain to be working. Collaboratively to map out a plan for this police authority that will help the member agencies.
And per the mayor's comment earlier, would that be an appropriate um, opportunity for the. The Police Council as a whole to have more of a philosophical conversation?
Yeah, so once the management case had time to work with the chief to sort of. Map out what it means to be staffed at different levels, then we can have that conversation with the Police Council. It's going to feel very familiar to those of you I've taken through a very similar exercise during difficult times here. Where you talk about what's, what's the minimum number of staff people you need to meet your mandates? What's the minimum number you need to meet sort of your goals and what's your optimum level? And then the Police Council will guide us on behalf of the community on where's the appropriate landing spot in that spectrum of options.
And one of the transitions this um, year that the chief had proposed and was agreed upon was this new step system. For advancing within the ranks of the law, of the Central Marine Police Authority. And that'll take a while to work through that step system so that all the employees are placed in their step. Area which they are then salaried and eligible for.
A lot of the first year increase is to adjust the authority from a compensation methodology that was. Um, more popular and more in, in place in police agencies ten and twenty years ago. Most police agencies have moved to what in local government, we tend to call a step system. My wife works for King College and they, they call it a ladder system, but it's the same concept. Um, and so the um, by moving the authority into that system, we did have to make some adjustments that do. Work toward this recruitment and retention goal.
Okay. And just a reminder to the public and to others that the Central Marine Police Authority represents three different. Uh, city jurisdictions, San Anselmo, Corder Madera and Larkspur and the Central Marine Police Authority. Board is represented by two members of the city councils of each of those three cities. And um, we have a management team, which is also the city managers of those three cities. So all of this was presented um, to them. Uh, that collaborative of council members and managers in the last month and approved. So. Are there questions of the captain from our city council members? Yes.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a little uh, more of a, a quantitative sense of, of, you know, some of these phases of, of. You know, the increases in the report. So I, I believe you have forty-two sworn officers and six vacancies. Is that the current number?
We're slated for forty-two, but we haven't had forty-two.
Oh, so, so they're thirty-six and, and six are vacant.
Correct.
Okay, and, and so.
With an anticipated departure of three more, so bringing us to nine.
Oh.
In, in the, in the near term.
Okay, good to know. So, so I guess I'm thinking, you know, just for, you know, simplicity, let's say it's two hundred thousand. Per vacancy. So we're still funding one point two million on positions that don't exist. You know, that, that funding is still coming in and that goes into reserves. Is that?
Goes into reserves. It's held apportioned to the member agencies. So it's not spent. And then we rebate it back to cushion a future year's costs. It's rebated back proportionate to how it was placed in.
Okay, and that's exactly where I was going. So you know, the, you know, five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars of current um, officer. Salary increases. So it seems that there's one point two, very roughly, we're taking half of that. That has been put in reserves and re- redistributing it to create a promotion system to increase, you know, retention, to attract people to a higher paying. You know, so they, they don't, you know, have a better commute and get similar salaries up in Sonoma. So that's the idea, but. I guess the question is, you know, do we see this kind of soft landing or this curve? Allowing us to fill these six positions in the future? Because, you know, we're, we're now loading the, the salaries with more, I, I mean, the, the, the. Um, you know, the positions with more salary and, you know, could we ever catch up and get to the forty-two number? Or are we just kind of saying that's never going to happen?
I don't ever want to say it's never going to happen because our, our intent, day in and day out, is to get back to full staffing.
Okay.
The problem that we've been facing is we are losing personnel faster than we can bring them in. Part of the problem is that it takes such a long period of time from the initial recruitment. Until their successful completion of training program, we're talking well over a year. And so within that one-year period, what we've been experiencing over the last couple of years is we're losing anywhere from two to three at a time. And only one is successful and, and now at, at a solo officer status. And so like City Manager Schwartz was saying. It's our hope that this uh, bargain for MOU with the Police Officers Association will bring us up to a. Competitive level with other agencies that we've been losing officers to. Um, but only time will tell whether that is truly successful or not. Um. Unfortunately, what we've been seeing is fewer and fewer people are passing backgrounds, are, are, are even showing up to the interview process to begin with. We'll get eighteen applications for one position, but only nine show up to the interview. And then those nine, half of them are not even passing backgrounds. And then you have to go to the Police Academy, successfully complete that for six months. And then the field training program. So it's, it's a very rigorous hiring process.
Plus, you want to hire people who are of the capacity and quality that we, um, that you expect within your agency to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's a high bar which we approve of.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the, the state has very high-level mandates for what constitutes a qualified police officer. And then in addition to that, our local communities have a lot of input as to the quality of people that we're, that we're bringing in. And so it's, it is challenging. Um, you know, the cost of housing in Marin is, is not affordable to a lot of. Uh, our newer officers. And so they're moving further and further away and doing the commute. And that commute wears on, on them after a while. And so like, like I mentioned previously. I, I, I do hope this is a step in the right direction and we're able to address the recruitment and retention with. The um, the proposed, the, the tentative agreement, uh, MOU with the POA.
And just one, one minor follow-up question. How many of the thirty-six officers actually live in Marin?
Two. Two.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
So I do want to follow up on Councilmember Paulson's point. So given that recruiting has been so difficult. Um, what are some of the? What are some of the functions or services that you guys have had to adjust for, given the fact that you're not fully staffed?
So our, our core, you know, um, service that we provide is patrol. When, when someone picks up the phone and calls the police, we will show up. Um, what we've been focusing on is lessening the impact. For the ancillary services. So detectives, um, our, um, our cadet uh, program. Traffic, traffic is, has taken a hit. Um, we had, I believe, at the time, there was a supervisor and. Three traffic officers dedicated to traffic enforcement and um, enforcing traffic laws and maintaining traffic safety throughout our communities. Um, we're down to one now because we've had to pull those ancillary resources and dedication to patrol to maintain. A level of service that the community expects. Um, so traffic's the big one. And then a lot of our specialty positions, we've just had to fold back. So in the summer months, we have our school resource officer that handles. All the schools in our jurisdiction. That individual is brought back into patrol just to help augment the staffing issues. But that's only a three-month window.
Thanks. And then um, I guess my other question is less on the operational side, but definitely more on the financial side in terms of how we actually. Fund the police budget because it sounds like recruiting is, is difficult. And I, I'll, I'll bring it back to Mayor Candell and Vice Mayor Way. I, I think being on the council, I think you want to. Perhaps talk to your counterparts in San Anselmo and Corder Madera. Whether it makes sense that, you know, we continue to fully fund the police budget, not because we don't want to support the police, but because there are vacant, there is vacancy. Um, whether, you know, we should not have so much money going into the, the police reserve, but um, have some of that diverted. The general fund.
So that would be, um, I mean, this has been an approved budget for this year, but policy-wise, moving forward, that could be a conversation that we could have in the. For the forty, for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget year. Um, if that's something, does that sound familiar with what you were interested in discussing, Scott?
Well, uh, I, I have a couple of questions. Um, I, I guess the, the first one is, uh. If you had to choose, if we had a limited budget and we had to choose between having fewer officers but paying them more. Or having less op, uh, choosing to have a fully-staffed forty-two officers but having them. Uh, less paid. Is there a priority that you would have?
If I.
Yeah.
I'm not comfortable with that question being answered. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I think.
Okay.
We still haven't actually executed a contract with, and that actually drifts into commentary on compensation. So.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask you a different question then, uh, which is uh, uh, follow-up on Councilman Andre's question, which is. The things that we are missing right now due to the six soon-to-be-nine vacancies. Uh, are we sustainable? Uh, if, if we stay with nine vacancies, uh, is that a sustainable number? And if it's not, is there a number greater than, I mean, smaller than nine that is sustainable, uh, based on your experiences?
So, so I think this should really go to the ca- the Police Council's conversation.
So that's actually the exercise I was referring to, Mr. Mayor, that we now need to take the chief, the captain. And frankly, the whole organization through a discussion about what does it mean when we're at thirty-six? What would it mean if we're at thirty-seven? What does it mean if we're at thirty-eight? Because um, the captain could speculate, but he hasn't had an opportunity to go through that exercise with. His command structure or the sergeants or even the rank-and-file officers to say, what would you do differently if we had to make this? The permanent norm. And that's the exercise I'm referring to that I anticipate the organization's going to go through in the upcoming fiscal year.
And I think it's also probably an appropriate one to bring um, it, with, with our colleagues from the two other cities. Um, at a police council type of forum first before it gets deliberated in our, uh, local, in our city council area. So I, I think we should work on that, Scott. I think moving forward, that would be an opportunity to really do a deeper dive into that. Philosophy like we had, you had brought up. Um, but I think we need to reserve that time, not for tonight's discussion, but for when the council. Of Police Council actually has a chance to debate them with our other colleagues. How do you think about, what do you think of that?
Well, then I have no further questions. Thank you.
I, I wondered before you leave this, I had wanted to make a comment about your discussion right before the mayor had asked his question.
Okay.
Um, it was actually at the Police Council meeting, uh, Representative San Anselmo raised the concept of introducing vacancy control to the organization. Vacancy control is a systematic methodology of planning around, you're going to have vacant positions. So it's essentially not funding vacancies. But recognizing that in an ideal world, you would hit forty-two. So I, I think we already heard from another jurisdiction that they want to have that conversation too in the coming months.
Okay.
So.
Um, so to summarize, we are looking at a four point six percent increase in the budget from um. Uh, Larkspur's proportion for the Central Marine Police Authority, which represents an increase of approximately two hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-three. And all of that information is available here.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I just wanted to point out, my understanding is it's uh, that number because it's being subsidized. By the reserve fund that the police have and the next year's, we will expect a much larger increase.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Well, essentially you're taking what would have been a large increase in one year and you're spreading it over two years so that you can absorb it. Over a two-year period. So there'll be a comparable increase next year to fo- fully absorb the amount. Unless we do some creative discussions and we figure out other ways to adjust the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Oh, okay. So um, I asked this question at Police Council, but I, I think what's also part of this discussion is. How much is in that reserve fund and how long can, how long is this sustainable? If, let's just assume that you're fully staffed and you're able to fully staff up this year, you know, how long is it sustainable? That we continue to draw down on reserves before having it come back into the general fund? I mean, at some point, it's not going to, long-term, it's not going to be sustainable. I mean, at some point, it's not going to, long term, it's not going to be sustainable. And so we really, I think, really need to look at what's left, what's remaining in the reserve fund and how many years can we realistically support a fully, i- if if forty two is the right number, you know, how many years going forward can we fully support that type of structure going forward?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure for the benefit of folks who don't monitor the police budget. The police council's policy, there has to be at least five percent of operating costs in reserve. Even after these adjustments, there's over eight percent in reserve. So we still have a healthy reserve. I don't think we are in danger yet of having to dip into that five percent. A big reason we have a five percent reserve for Central Marin is so there's always money to float because the bills for police are like a lot of our operations. They are not equal amounts every month and the police incur a lot of bills in August. And so part of that reserve is so we actually have cash in the bank to pay those bills in August, knowing that the member agency payments are scheduled to come in and and then we move forward. So.
Okay, so for the purposes of tonight, I think we've really answered a lot of questions on here and recognize that we have a lot more ahead as we continue to look at the restructuring of the process in the Central Marin Police Authority. But for tonight, I think this is as far as we can go. Are there any questions from the audience who are here? No, and I don't see any hands raised online. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We also had a presentation from Central Marin Fire. Should we postpone that or would you like to?
We should postpone that. I've I've reached out to the chief and he will be here on the fifth.
Okay, so thank you for accommodating that and the audience for accommodating it so that the captain can go off to other missions. We have a similar presentation that will occur by the Central Marin Fire about their budget and it was postponed until our following meeting. That material is in the back of the room and it will be posted online also. So thank you for adjusting that. And that brings us back to our original plan, which is for the city manager and the finance director to start discussion on the preliminary fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget. And since this is a working workshop and a lot of numbers and a lot of questions, I think I like if it's okay with the council that we don't just sit passively listening to a presentation, but if you want to jump in, ask a question, get clarification, we can do it more dynamically. Is that all right with you?
That works quite well.
Okay. And Scott, jump in if you have something. And then when we're done with all of that conversation, we'll open it up to the public. So hold on to your questions. And if we get a little steered off the rail for a little bit, I'll try to re-guide us back in. So let's get started.
Okay, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor Councilmember. So it's my responsibility to propose a budget to the council each year. And I do not do this alone. I have a lot of help and the lion's share of the heavy lifting is Ms. Gabrielle, our Administrative Services Director. So I have a feeling that if we get too far into the weeds, I'm going to have to look at her with a blank look on my face and she'll bail me out. So tonight, our exercise is to talk about where we see the budget, what we're proposing and give you an opportunity to ask any questions. You have detailed line items in front of you that were produced with significant input from the department heads. And we have our two larger departments, Community Development and Public Works. We have the directors here as well. Should you ask specific questions of those departments? I want to remind the council and those who may not have enjoyed our presentation, our last meeting, sort of what we view as the economic environment that we were using to do some of the forecasting for the upcoming year. So first of all, want to remind everybody, not a secret, it's an election year. It's very difficult for us to forecast in an election year because it it it's just a trend that you can map out that the patterns, particularly in the second half of an election year, are not particularly predictive of what's going to happen next year because the economy kind of comes to a bit of a slow to wait and react to the what whoever the new administration is, if there's a change and what that means for the economy. We are factoring in that we're still in a higher interest rate environment and that while it means for the first time in a while, we're realizing healthy in interest income, it means a lot of things are costing a lot more. We are seeing inflationary pressure in our operations and so we're dealing with that, just like anybody in your household budget or your business budget are struggling with inflationary pressure. You heard a discussion now about the labor market that the police are dealing with. On a smaller scale, we're dealing with that across our organization. It's not extreme. We're not necessarily ceiling three bodies leave for everyone we hire, as you heard the chief or the captain being concerned about. But we are finding that we are not getting the robust response to our jobs that we were in the past. And there's a lot of competition for top talent. And then if you've been monitoring the state budget, you're aware that the budget for the state does not look good and that tends to have trickle down effects into local agencies. So we're monitoring what those impacts will be. And in fact, as the council knows, and I want to acknowledge the county's leadership, Marin has a particular issue, as do several other Bay Area counties about a little game the governor's proposing to shift some of our local money back to the state that would have a modest impact on Larkspur, but a measurable one and it'll have a significant impact in Marin. It has to do with ERAF and what's called excess ERAF and how monies get distributed to schools and how they get distributed to local agencies. And I could spend an hour explaining it to everybody, but I encourage you to read about it if you're interested.
I think I forwarded you an email from the MCCMC Legislative Committee that does.
The bill was just released.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Good committee to to get their emails on.
Okay, so we talked a little bit at the last meeting about this and now it's baked into the numbers that you're seeing this evening. Expenditure trend, our costs are outpacing our revenue growth for the first time in several years.
I just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can I go back to our higher interest rate environment and just remind me what we have three bonds that we're paying interest on. How many do we know? We have the pension liability bond that we refinanced in twenty twenty and God, thank you for us doing that because that we lowered it very low. But then what other ones do we have?
I think we have the revenue lease bond associated with the road.
The roads.
Yes. These are the two bonds we have.
That we're paying an interest rate on now.
We do have some other debt vehicles that aren't bonds, but they're not very large compared to those two.
Right.
But those are fixed rate, right?
That's what was so great about the particularly the pension bond is it essentially fixed our number down at the three percent level. It's not fluctuating.
Yeah.
And.
But we scrambled, remember in twenty twenty when the to lower it to the best rate we could get at the time? Go ahead. All right.
You just had from police, you're going to hear from fire at the next meeting, their costs are increasing. And so we're having to figure out how to absorb that in our budget. We talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. Even though we did refinance our debt, our unfunded liability at Calpers. Calpers promised that they were going to become more predictable, lasted about two and a half years. And so they are now having problems again and their system for dealing with their underperformance of their portfolios is to charge us more money. So they are charging us a significant amount of money to the tune of about four hundred thousand dollars a year for the next twenty years to make up for problems in their portfolio. So then the other thing is, I'm sure you're all seeing this in in your own lives, but health insurance premiums are going up. And so that's a big contributor to our payroll costs. And then we do have a scheduled cost of living adjustment that takes effect in July. First pay period in July and that's three percent. So our payroll, our base payroll costs are will go up three percent. The other thing that folks may not understand as well about Marin, in particular, government in general at our level is we don't do everything in a vacuum. We have a lot of partnerships. And we often use the term JPA, Joint Powers Authority. It's a most common way for two cities or cities and counties to come into a contractual partnership to deliver services. Marin has an extensive number of JPAs. We have six that are in particular, have impacts directly into our budget at significant levels. The two safety JPAs are the most large ones. We also pay into the Transportation Authority of Marin, for example, that you heard a report from during your council member comments and in your budget book and in your budget line items, we go through the other ones that we collaborate on. Well, their costs are going up too. And so we're feeling that. Yeah, I guess I should pause. Okay.
Scott, just. Can't see him, he's too small.
We've made some revenue assumptions that drive our budgetary thoughts and what you're being presented with today. There are four, these are our four largest revenue streams, so they tend to be the ones we focus on the most. We are a property tax city. So as a reminder to folks not familiar with the ebb and flow of local government budgets. For the most part, Larkspur gets two paychecks a year to run its operation. We get a paycheck after the December property tax comes due and we get a paycheck after the April property tax comes due. So we have to figure out not just how we're going to budget against our projected revenue and property tax, but we also have to figure out how we're going to manage cash flow when it comes in two chunks. And so that is a huge part of what your staff does all year round in your finance division is make sure that there's always cash so that we can pay the bills and keep the operation running. The complementary fund for us is sales tax. Sales tax is a far more volatile revenue stream than property tax. It tends to move more dramatically with the economy. However, we've been very fortunate in Larkspur. Our particular mix of sales tax generators has been fairly stable and fairly easy to predict. Our main problem's been when a significant generator goes offline. How, with all that said, our sales tax consultant sees significant softening in our sales tax base and is predicting that will essentially be flattened this revenue stream for the next two to three years. So that means our sales tax revenue is going to hover around three million for the next few years and we have to plan accordingly. The other next revenue is our transient occupancy tax, our hotel tax. For all intents and purposes, there's one generator for T O T. There's a trivial amount from some other generators, but that's our, the courtyard by Marriott out in Larkspur Landing. The number you see up on the screen is the contribution to the general fund's operating budget. That represents nine tenths of the revenue that come, that we project will come in from the transient occupancy tax. One tenth of the revenue stream is put into a special fund, the transient occupancy tax fund, which the council allocates for purposes to promote or invest in the community with a focus on the business community and the environment for the business community. And then we rely heavily for cost recovery purposes in particular on our methodology for our permitting process and community development. And that's heavily driven by our building permit revenue. We've started to see a slowing. We're still, it's still a heavy, healthy stream for us, but I think that with interest rates rising and with maybe a little less turnover in our homes in terms of sales, we're not going to see quite the level of remodeling work that we were seeing, which was really driving healthy growth in our building permits for a while. In your packet, we like, we all like pie charts, so we do have a pie chart to show you. And I highlighted here that the sales tax and the property tax do represent the largest part of the pie. This gives you a little enumeration. This is detailed in the line items of some of the other key revenue streams that we will realize in the next year.
And can you remind me of the property tax, what percentage the city gets as opposed? Let's say a property tax on a property is ten thousand dollars. We don't get all ten thousand dollars. Everybody has to know that. How much percentage do we usually get?
Yeah, so it varies slightly around town, but Larkspur is, I guess, fortunate that it's fairly easy to calculate. In some cities, I just want to put a caveat, in some cities, neighborhoods are very different. In Larkspur, the rough estimate is we get twenty percent of base sales, of base property tax. So ten thousand dollars is the base that somebody's paying.
Right.
Then we would get two thousand dollars.
And not a base, meaning not all the additional assessments we've added on to.
Right. So if you open your property tax bill, I think the Marin assessor chooses the the term basic tax. I think that's what.
Yeah, it's the basic.
If they call it, different assessors have different terms, although a lot of them use that term basic tax. And so that's what I'm referring to. So we get twenty percent of that number.
And then the other numbers that are added on to the top of that go to the agencies in which that allocation is line itemed, or do they just get a certain percentage?
So for every property in Larkspur, I would have to open up a file to figure out how the base is distributed. Because that has to do with Wynn Prop thirteen passed and some rules that were put in place in nineteen eighty one. So that calculation I can look up for every entity in Larkspur. And then you can figure it out too. The assessor will give you that breakdown for your home. And then on top of that, you see an enumeration of all sorts of assessments, special assessments, bond.
Yeah. Paramedic tax bond, school bond.
Those are all directly going to whoever.
Those different.
Passed that particular assessment.
Okay, thanks.
Can I have another question on the property taxes? So when we get the projection from the assessor's office, are they just looking at existing properties and forecasting the growth? Are they factoring in, for instance, once this housing elements plan gets implemented and people start pulling permits, do they factor in any new properties that might be coming online or is this just merely what's existing?
So they try as best they can if they know there's going to be a significant property change in the base that's going to come online. They will try to incorporate that, but they tend to not do that until that is actually a realized project. So in the, in, so when they give us a projection, they're looking at our base and they're looking at the mix in our base. And then they have historical data that helps inform them of the likelihood of turnover and reassessment within that particular mix. It's a very sophisticated system, but the Marin assessor's track record is very good on accuracy. In part because Marin as a housing market is one of the more stable markets in the state, so it makes it a lot easier for the assessor to be very accurate.
And then one last question. So on total revenues, there's this charges for services line item that's going up three hundred and twenty nine thousand. What exactly is that?
So let's wait till we get, that's on the.
Oh, sorry.
Well, that's also on this pie chart, so if you want me to talk about it.
But we're going to get to this, these data points later.
Whenever you want to talk about. Amelia, you want to remind everybody what charges.
Okay, but wait, let's let's answer her question. So it's, since it is on this pie chart.
Amelia, do you want to remind me what all isn't captured in that umbrella?
And the question was about.
So that line item, charges for services is increasing by three hundred and twenty nine thousand?
Charges for services, I see it up there.
Yeah. So it's one point four, almost one point five million?
At the very top of your chart, of your pie chart.
Yeah, I think she's trying to get into the detail lines to give you the breakdown.
Oh, I see.
Seems like a large increase. Yeah, seems like a large increase. Just wondering what that is attributed to.
Okay. Implementation of Central Square, what is that?
That's our new software to handle all our community development activities.
So if you look at this general fund sheet, the line item has, charges for services has a little one hyphen next to it and it goes down to implementation of Central Square. So is that?
I'm going to let Amelia, it sounds like she's ready to tell you.
So i- i- in in this category, we have planning fees, we do have plan checks fees, tranche cut fees, engineering fees, building fees, encroachment permit. We have administrative services that we're charging to the Central Marin Police Authority and the Ross Valley Public Authority. And there's a number of other fees such as recreation fees, recreation rental, hall gym, et cetera, et cetera, technology fees.
I'm identifying that issue. One of the issues, we had some errors in last year's budget that we had discovered. And there's some significant underbudgeting of revenue in last year's budget. And there's set some significant underbudgeting of revenue in last year's budget. So if you go into the detail and you look at like planning fees, I'm not sure what happened, but when the budget got adopted, it's 20,000 got entered into the system, even though we historically do much better than that. And you know, we've changed directors. So we don't have a total institutional memory of what happened. But the 150,000 that we've placed into this budget is a much more realistic number than 20,000 for planning fees. So I think that was one of them. Similarly, we anticipate capturing more plan check fees. So that's because you'll recall, we hired a building official. Previously, we were using an outside service and they were capturing a lot of the building, plan check review. We'll be doing more of that in-house. And when we do farm it out to a consulting firm, we'll be doing it, I think, at a much more favorable cost rate because we now have a building official to guide that work. So that's another area where we increased the revenue significantly to reflect that. Now that had, when we hired a building official, we changed our cost model. So that explains some of the increase that occurred on the expenditure side was that we added the building official into the system. So it's not all new rev, it's not revenue that doesn't come without some associated cost in that particular aspect of it. Oh, and then the last one is the recreation fees are in here and we're starting to return to pre-pandemic performance in recreation. So we're, we have we've built in more increased for the use of the gym for renting things in Piper Park. Okay. So expenditures at a glance, with the pie chart back up. Those two big pieces are your public, your main public safety. I want to emphasize that your public safety, not your first responders. So I don't want people to forget that you have public works crews that contribute to your first response.
Hey Dan, I got a, I got a quick question. I'm sorry to interrupt. The number that you're using for fire, I see fire is up by half a million dollars. My understanding is we don't actually have a negotiated deal yet with fire. So could you explain? Is that half a million dollars optimistic, pessimistic? What are we talking about with that?
So because the contract with the employees in the fire authority expires at the end of the year and negotiations are ongoing and not anticipated to conclude before the start of the fiscal year. Then we had to put some factor into the budget. And so we put what I would say is sort of middle of the road inflation factor into the payroll in the fire budget to make it something we could take to the fire council to adopt. If the industry trends are in the indication, then there may be a budget amendment sometime in the first quarter that probably will increase that number.
So, so I'm sorry. So I'm, I'm looking at a 543,000 or increase, which is close to 10%. And you're saying that that's a conservative estimate?
Not, I'm not going to use the word conservative, but I suspect that it's, it may not be enough. And that I would anticipate that the final resolution of that contract may result in a budget amendment for the fire authority that increases that number.
Okay.
And to that point, at the last fire council and police council meetings, there were two additional council dates selected and put on the calendar for the summer in which if further conversation about budget has to happen, they're already penciled in dates for the entire council to meet in regards to that. I can't remember the exact dates now. One's June, one's in June and one's in July.
And then one other question about, since we're talking about fire. So in the fire council budget, the actual memo says that our amount was supposed to increase by 489,000, but this budget number is up by 543,000. So do we have other items in here?
I asked them to put a contingency in there on top of what was in that original memo. And we talked about at the fire council that we had a last minute addition of a contingency so that we started to get more realistically toward where the contracts may result in the impact. So hopefully that contingency, if it's needed, will soften that blow. If we don't need that contingency, we can take it back out after negotiations are completed.
And I, I have a question and feel free to let me know. This question is completely inappropriate, but it's for either you or Sky, which is hypothetically, if we are not able to work out a deal with fire, because they're a public safety agency, what happens? I'm assuming that they don't all just walk away and we have no, no fire services. So how does that work if we struggle with negotiating?
So by law, public safety organizations and their labor unions cannot go on strike. So instead, what happens is the contracts go into what's called evergreen status. In all probability, in the hypothetical that you're describing, it would mean that negotiations had reached what the state calls impasse and there's very clear labor laws that dictate what happens in that circumstance. So the operation would continue. People would continue to be safe and they continue to be served. But impasse means you eventually are going to get to a contract through the guidance of the state process.
Okay. And do you know about how long that process takes?
Just getting a state mediator to serve for the process takes its own amount of time. And then the process itself can take a while. I don't have an exact date. You know, I can't tell you. It's two months, three months, four months. It's, it's a lot of variables.
And again, don't want to go down too far down this path, but if that were to happen, is this a realistic number of whatever the evergreen status would be?
Well, then this number is actually higher than the amount because that inflationary factor that I had asked to be programmed into that budget isn't needed while you're in the evergreen status.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that deserves to be said out loud, Madam Vice Mayor, because I guarantee employees are watching this and I'd like them to hear what you just said.
Oh, well, I hope we don't get to that point.
Thank you.
No, we all do. But I'm just trying to, you know, whenever you negotiate, you look for, you know, best case scenario, worst case scenario. And it's just good to understand.
Yeah. And I think what we're looking at here with these numbers, I mean, we're good. We have a, a limited into the conversation about labor negotiations that we're allowed to do because we do have a, that is not our role right now on this, on this dais to do that. So I want to make sure we don't tread into areas that are not directly what our agendaized items are, which are to look at this expenditures and budget the way it's been presented.
Okay. And I do have a question though, because for instance, just taking the fire, but any other line item that's in this budget, it does sound like there is some percentage of contingency that's built in. So what is the policy if you don't need the contingency? What happens? Does it? Do people move numbers around to fund other things because it's already in the budget and it's approved? Or what, what is the policy? If we, if we approve something, for instance, this 500,000, or no, I'm sorry. You know, additional 50 to 60,000 in the fire budget, but it's not needed. What actually happens?
Well, let's make sure everybody understands the budget got passed. You don't actually get to choose. If you don't fund that number, you're in default against the Central Marin Fire Authority. So just be careful what we say in this budget.
Okay, no, okay.
Take two more hypothetical.
Yeah, more hypothetical. Okay, let's not use fire, but let's just use.
There's a contingency in the administration budget.
Okay, right. So what happens if everything goes to plan, we hit budget, we've got this contingency, it's, it's unneeded.
So when you fund a contingency, you are authorized, within the Larkspur budget, you are authorizing me and or my designees to decide if that contingency should be used for something. In the case of the admin contingency, which I use, I, I don't think I've ever spent the entire amount. So then it just goes back into, to the balance at the end of the year. There are times when I ask the department heads to, if we're getting toward the end of the year and I see that they're going to run in the black, particularly in a contingency fund, I do ask them if there are one-time purchases that would be better applied to a contingency than to come to the council later and ask you to give up reserve dollars. So there are times that we have that calculus in discussion. But when we do that, those one-time costs are operational costs. Maybe the, the last time I authorized one was a new pickup truck for the, for the maintenance crew. You know, they were running really well. They didn't need their, their contingency. And so we said, we can, we can pay for that truck out of this budget this year rather than program it into next year's budget or ask you to release some reserves.
And I think it's the legacy of Larkspur's financially conservativeness is also that we've maintained pretty strictly maintained our reserves as much as our capacity. And I, what we keep it at 25 or 30% now, I can't.
So reserve, you mandate by policy that there'd be 25% of operations in reserve.
Reserve is pretty high.
We've been running much higher than that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I also wanted to emphasize, you still have a spending control over staff. So staff has a limit to what we can spend without coming to council. So all large purchases that we might use contingency money, for example, on, you would be presented with the spending authority we've now tied to a state code. And we'll look at joining before, is it 75 now? Or is it 60? 60, it's 60,000. So the maximum that staff can spend on any one thing without coming to council is $60,000.
Great. Amelia, keep going. Oh.
So one thing that I did want to emphasize in looking at this budget, so this is that same pie chart, but now we've broken it down in a table with percentages. I can't remember if I have my effect in here. I do. Okay. I wanted to, to highlight those first responders and that public safety number. The reason I wanted to do it. Those are big numbers and I know you're wrestling with them, but I want to give you one thing to, to keep in the back of your mind that's a positive. When I was being schooled on how to do this kind of work, I was told you're, you're in concern when your public safety and first response costs are hitting 65 or 70% of your budget. And we're not anywhere up there. So these numbers are hard to wrestle with and they're going to force us to talk about real policy decisions about services. But we're not anywhere near what the league of cities would school a finance person is a, is a crisis situation where they've totally overcome your budget and you can't do anything else. We have the capacity to handle these numbers and spend the time this year to have the conversations to make sure that our priorities are where we want them to be as we move forward.
Hey, Dan, I'm sorry. Quick question. The negotiations for police and fire for the budgets, how are the three-year budgets that we negotiate?
So the term is negotiable, the, the anticipated term of the police budget will, police MOU will be three years. But I can't speak to the fire situation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, staffing changes each year, we highlight what we plan to do in terms of changing our allocation of positions. You know, this is really within the Larkspur budget, what drives our operations and what drives our costs. We are trying to reach the level I'm going to describe momentarily at 35 FTE, full-time equivalent positions in order to run at the current mix of mandates and ideal policy settings in direction we've received from the council. No one would call 35 what you sort of discussed with us a few years back as an optimum level of service. I know because I still get a lot of calls that we don't clean up the weeds fast enough. And that's because we're not, for example, optimally staffed in the maintenance crew. And we know that. And so we, we just do what we can to reach an ideal or policy level. And right now that's 35 FTE for us to accomplish that. We, last year we're at 34.5. That was because we had six months where we had overlap and we had two administrative services director that worked really well for us to pass the baton and get some of that institutional knowledge passed from our previous administrative service director to Ms. Gabrielle. So now we've dropped that half position allocation and we are proposing to add, and you've actually already proved so that we could plan out the recruitment, an HR analyst position. This is actually to replace, we've been contracting with Central Marin Police to get services from their HR manager. She's scheduled a retirement. We think we have the administrative capacity and specialties within our administrative function that if we were supplemented with an analyst, which is a lower classification, we could provide the same or more quality service internally, both to Larkspur and to Central Marin Police. So that's what we've built into this budget. Any questions on the staffing? Okay. Okay, meat and potatoes of the general fund operating budget. We're projecting a structural deficit. Now, because we run a pretty conservative operation when it comes to our analysis and projections of numbers, it's not the first time in the last few years, even when things were going well, that I've come and said on day one, we're projecting a structural deficit. But usually it's one where I tell you it's a five-figure number. It'll be easy to cure. We just aren't ready today to propose a budget where we know exactly how we're going to cure that, that problem. This is different. Because of that large CalPERS number that we had not been building into, we had known knowledge it was going to be quite so high. And so we didn't have the ability to build that new pension cost into our forecast. That's our most significant contributor to a new structural deficit situation. So by structural, I mean, these reflect our ongoing commitments and costs to maintain our current level of operation. As you heard, we have now the larger numbers for public safety. They're putting pressure on other parts of the budget. So that's also contributing in the sense that we need time now to understand those impacts over multiple years so that we can create changes in other parts of the budget that accommodate these new hits. It's going to take us a little time and it's going to be a conversation that's going to involve you and the community because we're going to need to talk about if we have to make a change here and there, what does that mean for service? And are people prepared to see those changes in services? As I said, the magnitude, the CalPERS cost increase was not in previous forecasts. So that's really our number one challenge that, that we weren't prepared for. One thing I want to say is we do anticipate that regardless of how many years are built into the fire authority's next contract, we feel comfortable, we'll at least have two years built into it. So that means we will know all our payroll costs across Larkspur as well as our two major cost entities, the police and fire for the next two fiscal cycles. So we can start to build an accurate model of what our payroll costs will be. Questions? Yep.
I know the fire negotiations are ongoing, but I think, you know, the same questions are the same philosophical questions that you guys are having or perhaps plan on having with the police, I think, apply as well to the fire. I mean, those are our two largest expenditures and it's public safety and it's, it's critical that we have them. But also the more those grow, it just crowds out everything else. And so and it's some, at some point, there's, there's not enough of the other stuff. As, as these continue to grow at the pace that they're growing, there's not enough other stuff to cut to make up for you know, the, the pace of increase of these two. So I think, yeah, so I, I think we really need to be having those conversations at both the police and the fire after you get through this negotiation. But I, you know, I, it feels like longer term, there's only so much you can cut of the other, you know, of the other stuff. If this continues to, if the both of them continue to increase 10% a year, it's, it's not going to be sustainable.
Yeah. So if I'll, I'll go on a quick explanation about fire and how I would encourage people to think about fire. Fire service, fire protection, fire prevention and medical response is basically buying insurance. You're buying for the community, the ability of a first responder to arrive and potentially save a life or lives. And so that calculus is built around the idea And so that calculus is built around the idea of how many how many people can respond that are needed to a particular incident in a particular amount of time. So the fire authority has been looking at its current allocation of resources among four firehouses. And also the condition of those four firehouses. And that study is being done by a third party with part of the exercise to be to inform the fire council and the two member agency councils of sort of what your current insurance level is, what what are the response times, what are the number of resources that can be on a particular incident scene in a particular amount of time? And are there opportunities to reconfigure particularly the stations to keep those levels of service potentially over time reduce costs? So that process has started, it's probably, we're in phase two. Phase one was an assessment of the buildings and the equipment. Phase two is an assessment of location, coverage and response times. And so I do think, well, first I encourage folks to go read the phase one study. It's up on the central and fire website. And then I anticipate that we'll be delivering phase two to the fire councils during this fiscal year. And it will inform the same type of conversation.
Let's keep going. And I think those are very comprehensive categories that we're going to have to really delve into probably at a different time when because we have a lot to cover tonight.
Okay, so I've been alluding to this and we're going to talk about it more. What what happens when we face a structural deficit? What are the steps for staff and for the council and for the community? So staff will start the process, we will start doing operational reviews. What are we doing? What does it cost? What is our sense of how the community values what we're doing? What are things we can change internally to do what we're doing more efficiently? And how does that translate into cost? Because we want to try to find as many cost savings as we can internally that don't affect services. That would also give us a roadmap to have the next level of conversation, which is a policy review with the council where we start to talk about, we've worked through our operational model. We've gone back to our mandates, we've gone back to every policy you've passed, every request we've gotten from the community. Here's what we're doing, here's what it costs, and here's how we can scale the operation in different ways to address our costs. And that's where you come in, you've got to guide us, you represent the community and you're the final decision makers on that discussion. And as you do that discussion, you want to get community feedback about what they do, value, what they're willing to potentially let go of. I hate to say it, but sometimes part of that conversation is also things that you over the years may have decided you were well, you were comfortable subsidizing, but you may no longer be comfortable subsidizing. And then we have a conversation about whether the beneficiaries of that particular aspect of our operation need to be involved in funding that that particular thing. And we do have a lot of those types of policy decisions that have been made over time. So we'll have to look at that as well. And that, as I said, leads into this whole discussion about service levels. So that that's something you're going to start to see us doing probably toward the end of the first quarter. And we're just going to be doing that as sort of a rolling discussion with the council and the community as we go through all of this.
And I have found in this role that there's a tremendous, tremendous amount of public education that has to go on, that goes on that I do in letting community know where our finances are and where the budget goes. And open up the conversation that here it is, it's very transparent. And if we, it's all available to the conversation is about where it gets spent. And it's a challenge because we had a public comment earlier in the, in this particular meeting asking for police resources to a particular neighborhood because of a concern that neighborhood may have. But we have limited police resources and we have limited, we have lots of neighborhoods and we have limited allocations in which our resources can go. And we'll need to continue to have that discussion of service levels because it's getting more and more complicated, particularly for the first responder levels or the public safety level. So that's my little sidebar.
Other?
Other sidebars?
Okay, so if you're ready, we can move on to special funds or if you want to take a pause or, I don't know. Do you want to dive through all the presentation?
Let's do all the presentations because I think we're doing pretty well if everybody's okay with that.
And then we'll dive into the numbers however you want and take, okay. So transient occupancy tax, TOT fund, was set up by the council as a means to set aside money that the council would invest in the, in community activities and operations as well as city activities and operations that promote business and create a community climate around, helping the business community. It's taken many forms over the years and how you've done that. But there's been a few core expenditures that have tended to absorb the bulk of the TOT activity. So first off, as I said, you're putting one tenth of the TOT revenue into this fund. That's roughly going to be ninety four thousand dollars, but based on our projection in the coming fiscal year. Longstanding commitment of the TOT fund is to cover our costs related to the July fourth parade, which is one of our most significant events and really brings people into the downtown. And so our our understanding of what we'll need to contribute this year is that we'll need to set aside fifteen thousand. That pays for security for the parade clean, it helps cover the cleanup costs and some of the other answer the impacts. The the stands that are put out, all that stuff is rolled into that and we contribute to that cost. Over the last few years, we've been doing more internally from printing banners that are on light poles to promotional materials, both online and in print and liaison work with the community that we've been covering out of the TOT fund with your authorization. So those are internal activities that are coming out of this fund. We don't charge time, any of staff's time, this is all, this is all materials and purchases that we're making. And then lastly, you've been making contributions to the Chamber of Commerce. And so for this budget, I proposed you contribute the delta fifty thousand after we, well, I guess the delta is really the city activity. But we've put fifty thousand in the budget. One of the things you have in your packet is a request from the chamber that they receive either the entire one tenth or a hundred thousand dollars. So you should probably take up that discussion this evening. I see there are members of the Chamber of Commerce present in the audience.
And a reminder that that also, the TOT for a number of years was also shared, if I recall, with the Lark Theater request.
So we used to have a grant program coming out of the TOT that was directed toward activities that were in the arts that also had a companion element to bringing people into Larkspur. And it was pretty consistently awarded to the Lark Theater when they were running a youth.
A youth cinema thing.
Program that would end with a showing of all these different films that students had created. And it was a nice program, but I think at the time became a victim of the pandemic. And then we've sort of moved that budgetary amount elsewhere. Sales tax, there are three funds within the general fund for each of the sales tax funds. You'll recall, your three sales taxes that you've passed over the last slightly more than a decade are general taxes by law. But the council did a lot of work ahead of those elections to build confidence in the community of how you intended to spend the money. And you've empowered an oversight committee to review staff's recommendations for what to do with the monies that are in these special funds. And then we bring those recommendations to you as part of the budget. And so although I'm not required to eliminate a recommend, if I have an initial recommendation and the oversight committee disagrees with me, I can still bring it forward. We have a great oversight committee, they give me a lot of robust feedback. They are not afraid to speak their mind. And I provided you with the packet that we actually took to the oversight committee so you could see some of the things we talked about and get a sense of the things we pulled back because of the discussions that we had with the oversight committee. So the third, the the two main funds are the active funds, that's measure B and measure G. Measure B is a three quarter cent transaction and use tax. It's just easier to say sales tax, it's actually a little broader than a base sales tax. And then the other one is measure G, which is the more recent quarter cent sales tax. Measure B, both are essential services taxes. Measure B talks heavily about infrastructure and that the council was hoping to achieve a revenue stream to help with infrastructure problems. And the roads, of course, were the most significant aspect of that. Measure G, heavy emphasis on our desire to improve our preparedness for disasters, to have resiliency centers potentially built and to also fund some of the additional items that kind of relate to how we prepare for and deal with potential impacts of climate change into our system. So like our storm drains, which was a big concern that we talked about, is being prepared because we know that our storm drains are aging and in need of investment. Our projected revenue in measure B for next year's two point nine million. Our projected revenue in measure G is nine hundred seventy six thousand. It's pretty simple. Measure B brings in three times whatever measure G brings in. So we're always going to bring you a projection and the measure G projection should be a third of the measure B projection because they're based on the same formula. The other fund is the measure C fund. So the measure C was a measure that the council passed as sort of its first time dipping the toe in the water of how the community would respond to a sale, special sales tax. It had a time limit attached to it. And I think council, former council member Chu used to characterize it as we need to prove to the count, to the community that we can be trusted as stewards of a special tax. And so we did a time limit tax of five years to show that we would invest it in the ways that we committed to the voters, even though it was a general tax. And so the funny thing about sales tax is that even when you've stopped in charging one, measure C hasn't been charged since measure B went into effect. We still have monies that trickle in periodically. Now, this has to do with the antiquated nature of the computer systems that the state uses to manage sales tax. Combined with the fact that there are a lot of provisions in the laws over sales tax that allow a business to hold it back until such time as they resolve disputes with the state about the calculations. And and then there's just sometimes people hold back and are willing to take the penalty. Or sometimes businesses go offline and it takes a while to resolve where all the sales taxes ended up. So I don't know, we.
It is measure C this time.
So I think the last couple of checks have been in the single or double digits. They're finally trickling down to nothing. But the other thing that happened with measure C is when we put measure B in place, we still had a balance in measure C. And at the time, we didn't have Central Marine Fire. And so the oversight committee's recommendation was to park the money in case we wanted to invest it in the fire stations. Then we built Central Marine Fire and that sort of discussion went away. But we've been sitting on a balance in the measure C fund for quite a while. And as we talked about at a previous meeting, I think, you know, the taxpayers understandably would want you to put that money to work somehow. And so we took to the oversight committee an idea on on moving it into our plan to work on our disaster and resiliency map that we're sort of building out in the Doherty Corridor.
And that's the eight hundred and forty two thousand.
That's the remaining balance.
That we're going to have, we're going to talk about next.
Yeah, so that's, when I come in the June meeting, those recommendations, I'm looking for feedback this evening on all those recommendations. But that's my intention is to build them into the final budget, unless I hear otherwise from the council in terms of your desires.
And that's on your slide fifteen of the recommendations.
So these are our proposals for these funds. Now, the proposals come in two forms. First, what do we do with the money coming in in this fiscal year? Right? So we have revenue that's coming in and we can program that revenue. And secondly, what do we do with the fund balances? The fund balance in measure B is sizable because we've been quite conservative in our use of measure B until we were certain that we knew what our trend line would be. Because measure B, the first major thing that we did with measure B was make a debt service commitment to the bonds to accelerate the road rehabilitation program. That was a tremendous savings over the life of those bonds in terms of what we did for the roads. And it got our roads to the wonderful condition they're in today. Pretty soon, we're going to be at the top of that list of best roads. I think we're two, number two right now is most improved, right? And I, I have to say, when I started, we were second to last on the entire Bay Area list, so pretty good jump. So that debt service is baked in. And when we built out the measure B forecast, we thought measure B would perform at that time based on our sales tax base at around one point eight to two million. So we didn't think we'd have a lot of excess revenue after we built out the debt service. Well, Bonner Shopping Center and Marine Country Mart have really stepped up their game, grown, their revenue streams have been much healthier. Our other major shopping center, the Cost Plus Center, has remained very steady as a producer and seen growth with the economy. Those are our big three shopping areas, those in terms of revenue generation. And so on top of that, what we didn't count on was, and couldn't model until we could see it as a trend line, is the fact that transaction and use tax is charged on goods delivered and used in the jurisdiction. Unlike sales tax, traditional Bradley Burn sales tax, which is only charged at the cash register.
At the mortar place.
Well, guess what happened in Larkspur? Lots of people bought or at least new cars over the last five years. And we're actually getting measure B and measure G revenue off of those purchases. And you can see it when you go into these numbers, you can see that they're they're building up. So we've just, as you saw in the projection, we built a debt service of one point six million into our program. And we now think measure B is going to hold steady for a while at two point nine million. So we have a very nice capacity to invest that money back into the community. So for this coming year, for the revenues we anticipate coming in, one of the things we've talked about with the oversight committee is we got, we did an exercise at the fire authority to program out their major equipment costs on on what would be the equivalent of an amortization schedule. So we could start to have a predictable amount of money that we needed to give to the authority to basically keep their fire trucks in the condition they need to be in. Because they're constantly in this sort of mapping out and paying for not just the trucks they have, but they start funding the trucks that are being built that aren't going to arrive for a while. So we're going to start to build that as a, as an ongoing cost into measure B. So you're going to start to see every year, our contribution to Central Marine Fire for their truck leases. And that number is going to hover in the one forties for the foreseeable future because we've entered into the leasing contracts, so we know what those numbers are. And the other big project that we wanted to program into measure B is we know with the library coming online at the Commons and we know with other future potential development in and around that area that there'll need to be improvements to Rose Lane, they've been on the books for quite a while to to structure Rose Lane differently. We're working through a process right now with the Rose Lane HOA so that we can facilitate this happening. And so we want to set aside money for measure B to do those.
Seven hundred thousand.
That's what the seven hundred thousand would be. For the measure G fund right now, because we're still in that early stages of mapping out the best use of that money. Plus, you've all heard me be passionate about the need to invest in storm drains. But we did get an infusion of money from the federal government during the pandemic and we allocated most of it for our storm drain program. So we're not in need of immediately pumping that money into that section of our operation. But one thing we do every year, and we talked about with the oversight committee, is we have a on-call arrangement with Hertz to rent mobile pumps when we see potential flooding in the community that are going to overwhelm our system. Because we do have pump stations throughout the system, they're designed to deal with a lot of that capacity, but we have some trouble spots. I know that those have been around town, know where some of these trouble spots are. And so we periodically need to rent mobile pumps to deal with that. We'd like to build that into measure G, it's very consistent with the themes of measure G. And so it's a variable amount. Some years we only need to do one rental and it's about fifteen thousand. And some years we have to do three rentals through the year. So we had suggested budgeting fifty budgeting 50,000, but it's likely it's going to fall in this range depending on the weather patterns. So that's what we're proposing for this year's revenue, what expenditures we would program into that revenue. The other thing is, what should we do to start to put some of these fund balances to work on behalf of the community? And so we've been very focused on the concept of having a place for the community to go. If we are in both the immediate aftermath of a disaster, but even more so, what are we doing in the 48 hours and onward in terms of recovering and the term, the growing term in that area is resiliency center? So our current plan is more of a campus approach because none of our facilities are going to be big enough to serve the whole community in one facility. And so our current plan is three-pronged. And that's the current community room at Central Marine Police, combined with Hall Middle School's gym, which we are a partner in with the school district for the gym. And then lastly, the Commons, the new library has now had, the council's approved, adding some community rooms that are going to be built to the safety standard required to qualify them as resiliency centers. Now, on those Commons, I do want to note, we're still casting our net out in case we can find some grants that could apply to defray some of what we're asking you to commit.
So what is that total? I can do the math, but maybe somebody can be faster at it.
That's 1.56.
1.56.
Seven total across those costs. And they're coming out of all three funds. That's why they're broken out. You have now in your sheet, we had a request to show you what all those fund balances and activities look like in one sheet.
That's this one.
You have a supplemental table. It's posted online that provides you with what this all looks like in a balance.
And that's the measure B, measure G, and measure C separate funds.
Yeah.
If anybody's interested.
And one thing I want to remind everybody that one reason the council wanted to have these in separate funds is you know, we, we get focused a lot in this public engagement on our budget. Our budget's a planning document. The document that holds us accountable is the independent audit. And by having these three funds, they all get audited separately. And so your independent auditor makes sure the transactions in each of these funds that you've set up is done consistently. The other thing that folks should understand is while I have the ability to make decisions within it, within a fund, based on your decisions and approving the budget, do not have the authority to ever move money across funds unless you've specifically authorized it.
To the voters.
And so when you set up these special funds, you're essentially ensuring for the community that you, the council, as the stewards of this money, will lay in on what the use of it ought to be. So those are our recommendations for some of these, the fund balance. You still will have a sizable fund balance in, in measure B after this. So there's still more money that you can consider in the future to put to work for the community.
Right. Are there questions the council has on any of this most recent presentation? And I'm sorry.
I meant the question slide, so it's
I know, you got to it. I'm following along. Yes, so Scott, want to go?
I'm going to start with, with Stephanie and then Scott, if you have anything, you can chime in.
No, I, I actually don't have any questions.
Okay.
Put my face back on.
Nice to see it. So go ahead, Steph.
Okay, so a few, a few questions. One, we'll start with, when you went to the Citizens Oversight Committee, did they have, did you get any pushback on any of these proposals?
So there was one member of the committee who objects to funding the resiliency plan. So he voted no on all of those items. Because the committee, for the first time in a while, wasn't unanimous, they did votes on each item. And so the same individual objected to the resiliency components of our proposals. There was one member of the public who also expressed concern specifically about measure B. I would say understandably, there are members of the community that were reflected in that comment who view measure B as a single purpose tax and that its entire purpose should be investment in the roads. And so I think when people hear that we're now looking at what to do with the money and that there's a broader purpose, it's a difficult dialogue. Because we did sell heavily that we were going to fix the roads. So I get that and understand it. And this is really the first time we've started looking beyond the road program for measure B.
Okay. And with respect to measure B, because I do share some of the same concerns, and this is probably a question for Mr. Skinner perhaps is, so we have about 3.8 million remaining in measure B. If, if we elect to do all of what you're proposing, although I don't see the 1.6 million debt service here, so I don't know if Ms. Gabrielle might be able to clarify whether the debt service is in this 3.8 million number.
So the fund balance is separate from the annual revenue. So the, the debt service is charged against the projected revenue. So it wouldn't show up in the, in the fund balance part of that sheet. It would be the part above on that revenue projection. I assume that call back up.
So it is on the first table at the top, you can see revenue lease bonds payment, December 1st, 2023, 271,000. And the second part of the top table, we have the revenue lease bonds payment due on June 1st for 1,186,000.
Which page are we looking on?
The supplemental sheet.
Got it. So the 1.6 is projected for 24, 25?
This is for 23, 24.
Okay.
And at the bottom is your estimated balance as of June 30th, 2024. So the debt service payment for 24, 25 will be funded with funding coming in, in 24, 25. So we're projecting 2.9 million in revenue for measure B. And of the 2.9 million, 1.6 million will be used to pay for debt service.
Okay. Okay. So if, okay, so if we, all right, so so I guess it's offsetting if it's 3 million in revenue and then minus 1.6, roughly 1.4 million is, is, would be remaining for fiscal 24, 25. In addition to the 3.8.
That is correct.
Okay, so you add, so that would be, you know, 5.2. Okay, so I guess the question for Mr. Skinner is is that enough? So if we, if we, now that our roads are like 100%, you know, A++ which we're very thankful for.
Not quite, but they're getting better.
But is that enough? As you look at our, because we have to maintain our roads and I'm assuming on an annual basis, there's going to be some expense for maintenance. Is that enough? Do you think 5.2 million?
I'll be happy to say from the walk up.
Okay, we, we don't want, you know, we, we don't want to use the money and then not have enough to maintain our roads.
So the, so the council adopted a policy that says that each year before the, I make any recommendations, I have to check in with Mr. Skinner about whether or not the other sources of money for roads is sufficient to cover that year's maintenance program.
Okay.
We do it farther than that. We talk about the next few years out so that we can start to forecast where things are going to go. So our current forecast is that we're still several years away from needing to supplement general fund operations with measure B money to maintain the roads. So essentially, we should not be coming to you if our forecast is correct for at least two or three fiscal years to say, spend some of this year's revenue from measure B to complement our, our budget for maintaining the roads. And that's because in your line item budget for the general fund operations, you have the gas tax money. You have vehicle impact fees from various sources that combine to give you roughly a million dollars to direct into the road maintenance program. And at this time, that's roughly what we project we need. But it will start to grow. And so then we will start to come to you and say, okay, portions of measure B revenue should be applied to the program this year.
And I think well, when we get to 8.1B, which is a review of the proposed capital improvement program, that will be outlined a little bit more clearly.
That's correct. So I think Julian will talk a lot about, about his thought process for this entire mix. But I want to just assure you that, that that was fixed into the policy for this very purpose, to make sure we never brought you recommendations that jeopardize maintaining the conditions of the road.
Scott, are there any questions you have?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Any other ones right now? Okay, so generally how we've done in this business item, 8.1 review of the preliminary budget was to hear the, the presentation that the staff puts together and to make any of our recommendations to provide feedback. And then the final budget doesn't get voted on until after that feedback at the next meeting or subsequent ones. Looks like most of our feedback and questions have been answered, but I'd like to open this to the public and provide your feedback so that we can understand where, where the community is on some issues. And then we can take that into consideration when we give our feedback at the end. Anyone want to come up? You've been sitting there all evening. I want to give you a chance, man. It's almost nine o'clock.
Mike Bristo, the President of the Larkspur Chamber. So just, we sent our proposal to Dan and Catherine and, and Scott as well for, for our budgetary requests of the 100,000 or 10% of the TOT has been historical for us to maintain. And based on our proposal within it, for those that don't know, there's been a 90% turnover in our board. We've increased our board. We've increased our events. We've redone our website. We've, we're offering more mixers. We're offering more ribbon cuttings. We're offering more services as a whole for the, the public, trying to bring more business to Larkspur and increase your sales tax revenue. So we'd like to continue to do that. And in order to do that, we need more funding to, to push.
And your number you had put in your memo, and I don't have it right here, was 100% of the TOT or?
100% of the 10%.
Of the 10%.
Yeah, so we had asked for 100.
Right.
But we're hearing that it's, it's less than a million. So we'll kind of take what we can get when it comes to the 10%.
So that equals that we had proposed, what this budget has proposed is 50. And because we're adding the expenses of the Fourth of July Parade and the administrative expenses.
Ours would be, I think it's 85.
Okay.
Yeah. Eighty-five.
It would be 94.
94.
Yeah, 10% of our projected TOT revenues.
But you subtracted out the Fourth of July Parade and the
That is just that, that's
That's what we
That's the ask is, is either 94 or fixed 100,000.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Yep, you're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to have a conversation about any of these budget items that we haven't now already had? Anyone online with their hand raised? Hands from our Zoom audience members. And there's no public comment. So I think the next step before we make any adjustments is part B. Is that all right?
Vice Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Comment on the the chamber request. Because I think we said we were going to talk about it a little bit. I, I just want to start out by saying that I think the chamber is doing a fantastic job. I think that they've, they've really turned the organization around. And they really are offering things for the benefit of the business community. I think it's, it's great. I wish our budget were a little bit different where we, we had the funds they're asking for. I think that that 50 is a realistic number. And I think if the council is comfortable and chamber is comfortable, they could always come back to us. You know, halfway through the year and make a request. Then we could see how our budget is doing and make any adjustments at that point. If we feel it's appropriate, because I think it is a very worthy cause for our money. I just don't think, I think we have to be responsible with our money at this point and make sure we're spending it and things that other areas and make sure everything, everything gets covered. So those are just my comments. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So I think what we need to do next is move on to business item part B, because this is another huge expense, which is our proposed capital improvement program. Before we congel both of these together and give our recommendations and provide the feedback, would that be all right with you?
That would work fine.
And I think we need to take a four-minute bio break. So we're going to adjourn till 9:04. We are back to the Larkspur Rego City Council meeting after our temporary adjournment. Is everyone here? Great. Okay, we're going to move on to business item 8.1, part B, which is a review of the proposed capital improvement program, the CIP.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public, Julian Skinner and the Public Works Director. So our next presentation is the five-year capital improvement program. And with this, as the city manager discussed, when you adopt the budget each year, you're also adopting the next fiscal year's allocations of projects in the five-year CIP. I have a number of slides with a lot of information on them. Some of this you saw as a preview when we did our department updates a few meetings ago. And there is some that was also covered in the previous presentation. So I'm going to go fairly quickly through the slides, but feel free to have me pause or stop or answer questions as, as we go through if I skip over something too quickly. So you're going to see the projects organized into three categories by what they are, whether they're streets or buildings or parks. And then we also categorize projects as either completed, which is just to highlight previous projects that won't get carried over. Ongoing projects or projects you've seen, you've approved in the adopted CIP before. And then I'll spend most of the time on the new projects. Those are projects, for the most part, you're seeing for the first time, other than the previews that I just mentioned. So these are some of the completed or closed projects that won't be carried over from park sign improvements. And some of these are not actually completed today, but by June 30th, they will be either completed or all the funds in these projects will be expended. Going down to measure B group four, that's the last of your paving projects under the measure B program. The next category is ongoing projects and these are further split into projects that have been in the CIP before, but we're proposing either amending or changing some of the funding for those projects. So this is the first group I'll go over. And then the next group of ongoing projects are ones that are just continuing with the funding that you've assigned before. The first one that has a funding request for 24, 25 is a bike and ped and accessibility project that we add $50,000 in gas tax to each year. This is for minor bicycle, pedestrian and ADA improvements that come up that are too big for us to handle with our maintenance crew, but they're not big enough to do a full-blown capital improvement project for. So this is kind of seed money for when we get requests for either ADA ramps or sidewalk or pathway improvements throughout town. Greenberry School Park, this was proposed in last year's CIP. This would be the next park that we would be funding. This is park development fees that would fund the $100,000 in improvements out there. Piper Park Parking Lot, last year you approved as doing the design for repaving the parking lot. And so this year's request is that you fund the actual repaving work. So that's 300,000 in vehicle impact fees that we're proposing for that project. The next two, actually, the next three projects are just funding swaps. So I've shown them here because we are taking previously allocated funds out and replacing it with a different source. And so these next two are ones that were covered in the previous presentation where the city manager discussed adding measure B and some measure C to two of the projects at the Commons. And so those are represented here in the library access and parking. That's the Rose Lane, 700,000 in measure B that was mentioned. And then the resiliency center component of the common space, the community space at the Commons. And so I've got the, the measure B and then the measure C numbers that are the adds to the project there. And then there's a corresponding removal of general fund reserve from those projects. Because in order to award the design build contract to Alton earlier this year, you allocated general fund reserve money so that we could award that project. So now that we've identified a proposed alternate funding source for parts of those projects, then you would remove the general fund reserve that was allocated previously. then you would remove the general fund, uh, reserve that was allocated previously.
Julian, on this slide, do you anticipate needing to use staging for construction equipment in Piper Park parking lot like we've had to do before for other projects? Um, when the new library and community center is being built, would it be nets, would it be repaving postponement for that reason? Or is that a possibility?
Sorry, would we propose staging part of the library project construction at Piper Park?
Some of the machinery, like the, um, like we've had to use part of the parking lot when they've done construction projects and staged some of the equipment in there?
Not for anything to do with the library project.
Okay.
No.
Just wondering, we've done that in the past for
The library, yeah, the library parcel itself is quite large compared to the footprint of the building. And one of the first things they'll actually do is grade and construct the parking lot for the library to a certain level so that they can use that to stage.
Got it.
So they'll work off of, uh, the site.
All right.
Um, and then the last one here is another
Sir Julian, I got something on the last thing there. Uh, the the storm drain improvement, uh, when you're talking about that, could you just, uh, explain the 700 that you have there? Is that the total amount that's going to be spent this year on storm drains? Or is your funds coming from another source as well?
Yeah, there's actually an error in this last line here. Um, this is a funding swap, so the 350 in ARPA is money coming out of that project. So this is a net zero. Uh, we're moving the ARPA into other projects that are, we can spend that money faster than in this project. So this, like the two above it, is will be a net zero in your budget. So that's 350,000 of ARPA money is coming out of this project and 350,000 of gas tax is going into that project.
Is there, is there another slide that talks about the the total amount being spent on storm drains this year?
The store, the storm drain project shows up in a later slide overall. It doesn't have the funds expended. It has the funds that have been allocated to date. You did have, you've had two recent items for spending on this storm drain project. One was a contract for spot repairs. It was for 150,000 earlier this year. And then on your consent calendar this evening, you approved a contract for lining storm drains for 450,000. So those are your most recent expenditures on the storm drain projects.
I- i- is there anything else in the budget for storm drains for the year, though?
There is no new funding for storm drains because we've allocated this, uh, money previously because it was, um, ARPA funding, which had a spending deadline. So we actually allocated the money before we could spend it. And so we're just now getting to spending the money that we've already allocated. This money was allocated over a year ago. We're just now able to start awarding contracts. It's been very difficult to get contractors to do these storm drain projects. It's not the same as the paving projects that we've done recently where we get three or four bidders and it's a fairly simple process. It's a lot more complex, so it's taking us a little bit longer to spend that that money with the, uh, on the storm drains. So even if we were able to allocate more money today to storm drains, I wouldn't be able to to spend it, uh, timely anyway.
I think the city manager wants to chime in too. Hold on.
Two points that it raised, just because we're using an acronym, everybody may not know what it is. ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act. So this is the money that the Biden administration released to government to help us invest in the community essentially in different ways so that we could stimulate the economy through the pandemic and out of the pandemic. And what Mr. Skinner is referring to is there's a appropriation deadline coming up, so we have to we have to essentially show we've spent the money or we've committed the money. And because of the fact that we were having some challenges with awarding storm drain contracts, this gives us a chance to move ARPA money to another project where we will spend it before those deadlines. And we're, so that's why we're proposing the swap. The other thing I wanted to emphasize that that Julian didn't bring up, a big part of the initial investment in the storm drain system is to upgrade all the pump, uh, storm, uh, drain pumps and the pump stations. They're all, I think all of them are pretty much in need of replacement. And you can't just do that. You actually have to go through a pretty long permitting process, so we're scheduling those out and some of what we're doing with money that we've been planning out for storm drains is building them up so that when those permits come through and we can actually award those projects, we'll have the cash to go.
So just for clarification, the original allotment for 24, three of four was was 350,000. And then and then that that ARPA money is out, the gas is in, so it's still 350,000.
No, this is only a portion of the, this is only the portion of the funding that's moving. I believe there was about a million in ARPA money and 500,000 in measure B in this project overall. All we're doing with this, proposing to do with this years budget is take 350 of that ARPA out. So there'll still be over 600 of the ARPA money in that project and the measure B. Uh, this is how much we thought we had to bring out to make sure that we can get it allocated by the end of this calendar year.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so the next slide is, uh, your ongoing projects where we're not proposing any funding, uh, changes. So um, unlike the operating budget, when we assign money to a capital project, it carries over, it stays with that project, even if it crosses over into the next fiscal year. So all of the projects that are listed here have been previously funded. Um, and we're looking to roll that money over to complete the projects in the coming fiscal years. Um, I believe there are two slides for these projects. Everything from, um, so there's pump station repairs on here. There's your 2023 pavement rehabilitation project. So that's our first year of doing pavement maintenance after the measure B funds. So there's no citywide pavement plan uh, or measure B funds in this paving project. This is your gas tax. This is the S B one gas tax, the vehicle impact fees. And the TAM, uh, measure A A County Transportation Sales Tax are feeding into this first year of pavement rehab. And so we're looking at paving streets that were done before measure B, even before measure C. Um, and a lot of this is going to be crack sealing. It's going to be spot repairs. It's going to be, um, some digout isolated areas. And then moving forward in the next few years, we'll start looking at some seals and some, uh, thinner, um, overlays on some of these projects. And then as a city manager mentioned before, while we don't have any more storm drain, uh, projects added, we do have a, some significant funds going towards Heatherwood Storm Drain Pump Station. So that's our first pump station that we're placing. That's a joint project with Ross Valley Sanitary, uh, that's an ongoing project.
So of the, um, Bon Air Bridge mitigation projects, those are done, aren't they? Except for the old dog park?
Yeah, all the components are complete. The docks are in, uh, the park was upgraded, uh, the ditch and the new dog park. The only thing that's remaining is the disposition of the old dog park that we're still dealing with a number of different agencies to determine what what happens there. Whoops. Okay, so this is, uh, the next slide is for the proposed new project. So there's six slides. Some of these you've seen before, so I'll go through them rather quickly, but, uh, stop me if you need any additional information. The first is the Hall Middle School Resiliency Center upgrade, as was mentioned, uh, previously, we're estimating about, uh, half a million dollars of measure G. Again, this is one where there may be some grants that are available. If those do come to fruition, then we'll come back and do a budget amendment to to swap the funding. And then a smaller project here is just a study to look at the railroad building that the city uses for storage. We believe we can use that building more efficiently. And so, uh, we're looking to do a study. Uh, we don't have any plans of that building. We don't know how it was built. And so we're looking to add some storage increase in there, maybe a mezzanine or some, uh, storage system. So we're going to have a structural analysis of that building to see what the parameters uh, would be to improve it so we can use it for storage better. And then also it does have a lot of leaks which are problematic, depending on what we want to store there. So uh, this is a $50,000 request to do that study work and, um, anything that would need to take place after that study to come up with better estimates for what it would, uh, cost to renovate that building. The next one is not necessarily new, but it was not in last year's C I P. It was amended recently. This is the City Hall renovation study, so I'm just showing it here because it was not in last year's presentation, but you already approved, um, the funding for this, um, a couple of meetings ago. Uh, that's a 232,000 in general fund to do the analysis of this building. And then your last, hopefully your last big paving project is the Montevista paving rehabilitation. So uh, this is going to use, uh, the last of the the bond money from, uh, the paving program. So this is money that was left over because these streets were pulled out of other projects because of utility conflicts. So this says Montevista, but it also includes a little piece of King and a little piece of Rich, uh, Street. And so as we have done before, it's a citywide paving plan for the construction, and then we use gas tax for staff time and consultants so that we only actually use the bond money for the paving, uh, pavement material that goes in the ground. Um, and here's our next, uh, pump station that we'd like to do. This is Larkspur Plaza Drive Pump Station. This is very much different from Heatherwood and what needs to be undertaken here. For this one, the pump station itself is not in that bad of a shape, but there are some configuration issues with it that we need to, um, we need to change the way that it discharges into the creek. And then there is a flood wall that goes along the length, most of the length of Larkspur Plaza Drive that works in tandem with this pump station and the flood wall doesn't really work anymore. And so this would be improving that flood wall and then reconfiguring the discharge from the pump station out into the creek. Unfortunately, or fortunately, those, uh, things trigger a lot of resource agency permits, so it extends this project out somewhat. And so at the moment, we're looking for, um, $100,000 to start, um, the surveying work and the permit process that would be required to undertake this uh, project in the future. So we're just proposing, um, $100,000 in funds to get this project underway so that, um, we can, um, do this project probably in about three to four years is what we think it's going to take, uh, resource agency wise, uh, to get it permitted. Um, and this is one of those projects that we can do now. So this is where one of those ARPA funding swaps that I mentioned before from the storm drain project comes in over to this project because we can move forward with the, uh, surveying and everything, uh, once the budget is adopted. The next project here is a wayfinding program. Um, and so this this project would look at, um, a program to install wayfinding sounds and monument signs around uh, the city. So people knew when they were coming into Larkspur and then when people were in Larkspur, they would know where, uh, certain attractions were. We've started a little process to to see what this project would look like, but, uh, we would under this project, this funding would allocate as hiring a consultant who would help us engage the public and find out what is it the folks think, uh, we need to be directed to and things like that. And then, um, hopefully enough to install a number of those, uh, signs. And so that's uh, estimated about $200,000 and the proposed funding source for that is the Business Enhancement Fund.
Just so we're clear, so the T O T fund is officially the T O T Business Enhancement Fund, and I probably should have had you put T O T just to keep it consistent. And that would be coming out of, there's a, there's a balance in that fund. Maybe Amelia, when we get to discussion, you'll have that balance ready.
650,000.
Oh, there you go. Mr. Skinner knew it. 650,000.
Uh, the next slide for new projects is a proposed study of the Magnolia Corridor. So as you heard a gentleman earlier, had an issue with, uh, the southern segment of Magnolia. Uh, we hear similar, uh, concerns from folks about the the northern segment. And they're everything from the cars are driving too fast to I can't drive fast enough in my car to there's not enough sidewalks. There's too many sidewalks. Uh, and there's some inconsistencies when you go from block to block, whether you have four lanes or two lanes, or you have a sidewalk or you have a path. And so we feel this would benefit from a comprehensive look at the corridor overall, and we think it's really from about Doherty or Creekside North all the way up to College is a little different than the southern segment. So, uh, we want to focus first on that northern segment. So this would have, um, some traffic studies. It would take some counts. It would look at how people are using the corridor. And this would be for all users. So this is not just trying to make it work for vehicles. This is making sure that we can plan for the best facilities for bicycles and pedestrians, uh, moving forward. And this includes, um, the intersections as well as the number of lanes and like I mentioned, the sidewalks and and the paths. Um, and then the County of Marin, which, um, has jurisdiction over College Avenue, which is what Magnolia turns into at at Kent, have been doing a similar study, uh, on College Avenue. And so we're looking to work on this now and then work with the county and see if we both end up at the same place when we get to Kent and see what that intersection should actually, uh, look like. Uh, and so we're estimating this is about $100,000 and we're proposing that we use transit mitigation funds for this, which is funds that previous developers have, uh, put aside for when they've come in for development, which are, uh, meant to help the city's, uh, infrastructure, uh, throughout the city.
If I could chime in with two quick comments here. One is I think one of the most fair criticisms of the city with respect to this stretch of road is if you look back over the history of the last 30 years, everything's always been done incrementally and without a comprehensive analysis of how it all works together. So there were improvements in what's we've now labeled the North Magnolia Business District at one time, but it wasn't done with any thought of how it would flow north and south of that district. Similarly, uh, when we looked at what we were going to do about widening or not widening the intersection around Bon Air, same thing, not really looked at in the context of the larger road and how it works. So we think this would be really valuable. I also wanted to highlight this because, uh, an outcome of our discussion with the Oversight Committee, this was actually something Mr. Skinner and I thought fit nicely into the measure B program. But they made a very strong case that we should not be funding studies where we don't have knowledge if it's going to produce something and that that should come from another source. I think they're open to when it's a design type of study where we already know we're going to build something. But what what they said, and I think it was fair, is when you're going to do something where you may do a study and nothing happens, that doesn't seem like a prudent use of this particular pot of money. So, uh, we do have a transit mitigation fund, so we've proposed allocating it there.
Okay, the one on the bottom of this page is a Redwood Pump Station Valve Replacement. So this is, um, a valve that failed a couple of winters ago. Um, and we did come with an emergency request to add funds in the operating budget that year, uh, which was approved. Uh, however, we ran into permitting issues and we were not able to get emergency permits to replace the valve. And so we did not spend the money. Uh, the permits have got through, uh, a certain phase now, and so we're ready to do that. Uh, but we feel this is more of a capital project based on the amount of, uh, funds that are required. So that's why we're proposing it as a as a capital project rather than, uh, in the operating budget. It's also easier for us to track um, in the future if these big improvements are done as a capital, um, improvement versus in the operating budget. And so that's another one of those, uh, funds that we would swap out some of the, use some of the ARPA money, uh, for. Um, and then the next two here, um, so, uh, the city is responsible for maintenance on most of the streetlights in the city, the ones, most of the ones that are on the public streets. And so uh, we have a number of different styles of streetlights and there's a common style in the Green Bray Hill area and the Bon Air Hill area. There are these old metal poles that are all right around the same age and they're all getting very rusty, which, um, besides being unsightly, is not good for the, uh, pole structure. Uh, and so we've looked at some of these poles with our, uh, streetlight maintenance contractor, and they've agreed they need to be addressed sooner rather than later. Cause these are all subject to wind loads and, uh, they're designed to stand up. And so as they corrode and the metal gets thinner, they they potentially could be a failure issue in the future. So, um, there's about 120 of them or so that need to be painted at this time. And it's too big of a project for our maintenance, um, streetlight maintenance crew to to undertake this many at once. So that's why we've programmed it into the capital budget. Again, this would be eligible for gas tax funds because it's within the street, but, um, this doesn't need any other permitting or anything. So it's another, uh, ideal candidate for using the ARPA money because we can do it sooner rather than, um, later. Um, and then the one at the bottom is a project that has a price tag of about $700,000 and at the moment, none of it will be city funds. So this is, um, part of, uh, our, um, N P D S National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, uh, permit that requires us to, uh, look after and clean storm water. And one of those requirements is that by, uh, 2029 that we separate all the trash out from the storm water, um, has a big price tag on how to accomplish that. Uh, we work with the Marin County Storm Water Prevention, Pollution Prevention Program. They Um, they were able to secure an EPA um grant to look at how all the agencies in Marin are going to address this trash capture. Um, and so that APA EPA grant was able to design um a few structures in Larkspur. And then uh we've identified or McStop um identified that Caltrans have funding available if a local agency uh can put a trash capture device in for their storm drain system that also includes some runoff from Caltrans right of way. Caltrans have money to contribute to projects. And so it turns out that um in this location, which is technically in Corder Madera, um, it's on um Lucky or Niven, I think it is over uh by the Big Five. Um, that takes a lot of the storm water from the other side of the freeway on Redwood Highway, which is the cities, but it also takes some Caltrans uh storm water. So there's enough funding here for uh this to be built without any city funds. And then the city will get credit for the trash capture that it's providing for the Redwood Highway um area of the city. And then the last one here is the King Street Bridge Wing Wall Replacement. We've just separated this one out. Again, this is another one that requires um permits. This is right at the bottom of King where it turns into Montevista down here. There's a wing wall, which is a retaining wall that's attached to a bridge uh that is slowly turning and will fall into the creek if we don't replace it soon. So uh that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, it's probably a couple, three years project to get it done, but it doesn't have a very big. It probably costs more to get all the permits and it won't actually uh do the work. But we're requesting a hundred and fifty thousand in gas tax for that. Uh, the next one are a lot of numbers, so I'm just going to kind of go through them really quickly. This is the sum of everything I just showed you where we're proposing new funds. That's the sum total of it, three point eight five million. And that's the breakdown of where all those funds would come from, including the credit back of one point seven in uh General Fund Reserve. Um, the next is all of the allocations for this year. So this is a listing of every project. And then over on the right is the column that shows you where we're proposing that money comes from. So these are the buildings. So again, this shows the Measure B and the Measure C, and it shows a general fund coming out.
So Julian, let's just stop and pause for a second, and I want the council to see if they have any questions about your um project slides um before we get too far along um of the proposed new projects. Because you um posed one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven new projects. So let's just stop for a second and any of us have any question about those eleven projects?
Um, I just have a question on the railroad building one for storage. Is that the most cost effective storage location? Or um it feels like it's an old building and if you're going to have to do a lot of work to it, is that the most cost effective place to say, I don't know what kind of storage you're looking at, but is it easier or better just to construct something else somewhere else?
We own that property, so we don't have to acquire any property to do that. It's our building. We were given it years ago. I don't even know when we were given it, when the old electric railroad was converted. That used to house the generator and pull for the electric system. Uh, so in answer to your question, we just don't, you know, we're a asset poor city. So if we don't invest in that building, we don't really have land to build on, so we're probably talking about acquiring something.
But what would you need the storage for, I guess?
What do you keep in there?
Yeah, what would you use that for?
So um some of the overflow from Public Works Recreation uh equipment are stored there. Some of the larger things, uh I think the last time I was in there, I noticed all the archery uh equipment was in there. Uh, then there's a whole set of racks for files that have been decommissioned, but we aren't allowed to destroy. Um, that's actually the one we're most concerned about that we store there because it's not the most weatherproof building. We have uh scanned a lot of those files, but we're not allowed to destroy them. So um they're held in that building. Uh, we allow C M P A to sometimes temporarily store things that they can't accommodate in their facility in that uh building. I think there's extra office equipment. I know there's a bunch of windows for the firehouse next door because we're terrified to put them in because we think we'll probably discover and trigger a bunch of requirements on fixing the building once we do. So it's, it's a bit of a hodgepodge, but we don't have anywhere else to keep things. So that's our primary storage facility.
But we, I think we also have to remember it is in our historic registry as a historic building. Um, I'm pretty sure it's, I mean, it's a historic building. I'm pretty sure it's in the registry that we are obligated to maintain it too. Uh, or is it?
I don't have an answer for that. I have to do some research about that. Um, the railroad was very eager to get rid of a lot of stuff in the nineteen seventies.
Right.
And there's all these strange old agreements where they got rid of a lot of stuff. And I'd have to go read into the minutia to see what they obligated us to. And then I'd probably have to have somebody dive into whether or not it was put in the historical registry.
Don't do that, please.
Uh, yeah, yeah, quick question. Yeah, just um if you could say a little more about the Hall Middle School Resiliency Center, what, what exactly the updates are? I think I feel like we went over this at one time, but I could use a refresher.
Yeah, so primarily it would be improvements to the heating and the ventilation and the air conditioning because right now it's conditioned as a gym, gymnasium, which is pretty minimally. So if it were to be used as a resiliency center, it would need a different HVAC system. It would also uh be used for clean air. So um rather than having to take portable scrubbers in, then we would modify the HVAC so that it were able to clean the air. So if there were the smoke events where people needed clean air, um and then also some power uh upgrades. Because as a gym, it's not set up for people to plug their uh iPhones and their uh iPads in. Say if we have a P S P S and we have a place where people need to go and recharge. Um, and then some alternate uh power uh options also.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Scott, on those first slides, anything, any further elaboration on the proposed projects?
No, Julian, the only thing that I would ask is on the slides coming up uh when you're going over the different funding sources, if you could just uh point out which funding sources are not city funds, you know, whether they're grants or or, you know, federal money, whatever it is, just so we can keep track. Because all the city money was just moving from one pot to another. But I just want to keep track of what is, what's city money versus what's not city money, that's all.
Okay, thanks. Let's keep going.
Okay.
Since the real detail.
We'll get into um the details here. So yeah, so uh for the most part, if it's a city fund, um it's got the name of the fund here, the very last column. Well, the very last column is the the summation of everything, the total proposed. Uh, but you'll see a column at the end that will be other or restricted revenue. That means it's uh money that either has to be spent on a project because it came from a donor or it came from a grant and it's tied to a project. Other than that, the funds, so on this uh sheet, your funds here are a general fund, Measure C, Measure B, and Measure G. So those are all city funds um and three of them that were uh subject to uh I was taking uh and getting a uh recommendation from the Oversight Committee. Um, so this again was your buildings and this shows uh the projects and the funds um that we spoke about before and that the city manager uh showed in his presentation. Um, so you've got the um the swap for the general fund out and the Measure B or Measure C and for the community space, you've got the Measure G for the Hall Middle School and then uh General Fund Reserve for the railroad building. And then um the City Hall renovation study is shown in here, but that's prior funding because you already allocated that. Um, so these are all city funds on the slide. Uh, the next slide is your parks. Um, and again, these are city funds um also. Uh, although the first four hundred fund here, park development, uh that mostly comes uh from the county parks. Uh, their Measure A, there's a small component that we get from um development projects, but primarily this comes from the county uh Measure A parks. Um, that's a hundred thousand, and that's about how much we get each year. Uh, we're proposing a program to Greenberry School and then Piper Park Parking Lot. Uh, we're proposing vehicle impact fees for the parking lot and part of the access road that goes um into the parking lot. Uh, the next slide here um is the streets. So this is the bulk of your um expenditures. Um, and again, here I'll go from uh left to right is with the project name. And the first column is your prior funding, then the next is your sum of your funds. And then the funds are listed uh one by one until you get all the way to the end. And then when you see grant slash restricted revenue, that's money from outside um coming in that's tied um to these projects. Uh, so the first one is the annual um ADA, this fifty thousand of gas tax. And then moving down, you see gas tax going into the storm drain project because we're removing uh ARPA, which is outside, so that's the three hundred and fifty swap. Uh, and then going down from here, uh these are all the new projects that I just showed on the slide. Um, and then again, your last, your second to last column is the outside funding. So um this is, in this case, it's ARPA um is coming from the outside. And then there's the money that's coming from the EPA and from Caltrans for the Black Kettle uh Lagoon is also shown in this last column. Does anybody have any questions on this funding sheet? Okay, I'm going to move on. So as I mentioned before, this is a five-year plan. So the next sheets just show the same thing, but they're projected out five years. And so um we get a lot less detail as we move out towards the fifth year. So you'll see a lot of allocations in the current year, uh and then less and less as you move out. But we do have some uh known here. So this is, this is your buildings and, and again, this is allocations. This is not expenses. So we're definitely going to have expenses on our buildings over the next few years. Uh, for example, the library and the community space, but that money's already been allocated. So it's not showing in future years. This is not spending money. This is when we're asking you to allocate or budget the funds, which is why you don't see um money in the next fiscal years for the library, even though we'll be spending the money. Um, the next one is parks. This one, uh we have projected out what the next parks will be. So Heatherwood Phase Two and then improving our greenways. And then after we're finished, uh an effort to do some revisioning of uh Piper Park, we anticipate coming back and spending some money in Piper Park. So that's the the five-year plan for parks. And then uh the next is uh streets and as grants um come up, uh some projects will get added in here, but uh here's what we know at this point. It's showing uh that fifty thousand that I mentioned for the annual project going out for the next couple of years. We've got to do some mitigation monitoring for the replanting we need to do associated with the Bon Air Bridge um that we'll have to spend starting next year. Um, and then as we get down to the bottom of this sheet, um, the last few projects, as you see, starting to make their way over into the right hand columns, um are your pavement maintenance projects moving forward. And the one that's a little bit higher up on the second row, that's the uh anticipating spending money at the Larkspur Plaza uh Pump Station. Um, and then lastly, I think lastly, um here's your list of unfunded projects. So yeah, these are uh projects that have come up in conversation before or they've been identified in studies. Uh, but at the moment, we don't have a good match of funds or we don't have a realistic expectation of when these projects may be um undertaken. So um that's everything from the two firehouses that we discussed before. Um, you'll see the Magnolia Avenue College Woodland Intersection is on here. Um, there's about another uh thirty million dollars in storm drain improvements. So um that's kind of a hundred and twenty thousand in total of projects that have come up in the past that we don't have funding for um at the moment to complete. And that was the last slide, so I'm available for any questions. Um, and again, there's no action tonight. We're just looking for your feedback so that we can bring this back to you in in June to be adopted as part of the budget.
Yes.
Two quick comments.
Yes.
Could on the resiliency component and investment in Hall Middle School Gym. Part of our situation is the school district's interested. They're our partners in the gym. Um, but they want to know we have money before they go very far along because there's quite a process for them to get approvals for the modification on the school site. So um part of what we're asking you to do is make that allocation so that we then can tell the school district, we now know we have money to do this project.
And I'm sure they have scheduling conflicts because they're using that property.
It could be a while before every component of that actually would
Yeah.
happen. Um, and then uh the other thing I wanted to remind the council is that uh when the countywide Measure A for Parks was first passed, uh you adopted a plan through the Parks and Rec Commission's recommendations to invest that money on a rolling basis in the neighborhood parks. And so that's why we're bringing you the Greenberry School Park. It's that park's turn to be, you know, their prioritizations come to the top of the list. And uh I don't know, I think we've been doing that program. Well, the tax first passed almost a decade ago. And we've been doing it pretty religiously every year. We've invested in one of the neighborhood parks. Sometimes we find other monies and we're able to make the investment a little larger. Sometimes we've had neighborhoods step up and complement the uh investment with their own monies, so.
Okay, so thank you, Julian. Um, I I'd like to acknowledge that we have two public comments that are um written, public comments that were submitted, and they are on uh Allison, our city clerk has timely posted them on the agenda, so they are available. And um one of them was in reference to the North Magnolia Corridor Study um and another to, I think, some of the ADA requirements in there. So just an acknowledgement that we saw those. Um, but I'd like to see if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comment about the second part B section. Anybody online? Okay.
I'm looking for any raised hands from our Zoom audience members. And there's no public comment.
Okay, so this is a business item. Um, we've had eight point one A and eight point one B, so I'd like to bring it back to us. This is a preview, we call it, and the final vote and final discussion um is at the next meeting. Um, with an opportunity, if we don't to, our budget ends June thirtieth, so we have another opportunity. But we'd like to make sure by the first um meeting in June, we've submitted an agreement for a final budget. So bringing it back to us, is there anything that jumps out at you that you would like to have and provide more feedback for? Um, other than what we've already talked about?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Um, you know, um, first of all, Julian, thanks for uh especially kind of the cross referencing of funding. Um, a lot of these projects seem to be really necessary, like the um, you know, Greenbray streetlights, you know, that that's a structural issue and the King Street, you know, wall. Um, what I'm wondering, you know, not just the public comment we've had tonight, but just being in touch with a lot of community members is is the number of of residents I hear asking about traffic calming. You know, sometimes e-bikes, which is a whole different topic. But, you know, I also think about the radar signs, you know, that are about three grand each and the chips can be used to, you know, really inform, you know, where things might happen like the incident we heard, you know, around a hundred forty Magnolia. Um, is there any room for that in here? I know this is really coming out of left field, but it's something that's been on my mind and I just thought I'd I'd bring it up right now.
Um, yeah, so a couple of things. Um, so a couple of Um, things, one regarding uh the traffic calming. We have met with a number of neighborhoods in the past who have asked about traffic calming and we've had some neighborhood meetings. And for the most part, with limited exception, we've not been able to arrive at a consensus with those neighborhoods on what traffic calming means. And a lot of times where the traffic calming items should be. For example, people really want to have speed bumps, but they don't want it in front of their house. Um, so traffic calming is is probably not something that's likely to come out of this, that fifty thousand because it it requires a lot more feedback from a, from a neighborhood. Um, but s- some of the other things like the radar feedback signs. Um, typically in the past, we've looked for grants to install those. Um, but again, usually they go in front of somebody's house somewhere for the most part. And so um, you know, where they may have a purpose, they're not always wanted in a, in a certain area. And so usually that that fifty thousand is for quick things that are not going to be controversial. Um, things like radar feedback signs and and traffic calming are kind of a a bigger effort that usually takes a little bit more community uh feedback and would evolve into a project in of itself. Uh, and I wouldn't want to just do by taking something out of a annual uh pot of money. And I wouldn't want to just do by taking something out of a annual pot of money.
Okay, and then just as one more side comment, about how many radar signs do we have in Larkspur?
There is, there's a set of them on Doherty. And then there is a set of them on Villa Cumbre, but I don't think those are in service anymore. And then CNPA has a number of mobile ones that they can move from location to location. And they have designated areas and we work with them. For example, we've had them on South Alisio before and we've had them on Magnolia. So if we want them at a certain location, we get in the queue with CNPA. And then we get in a certain location in Larkspur for a while.
Thank you.
I think a lot of the challenges, and at least in my experience with a lot of the traffic calming ideas, is that it's a lot of anecdotal reports. Not that they're not valid, but we need the data to, and the data has to come from actual traffic studies. And it, it's really hard to create policy without those, in my opinion. And we, we had that, I remember the North Magnolia, or the Magnolia Road Diet. That was one of the Bon Air Bridge mitigation things. And that was the consternation that that cost was extraordinary. Because just taking one lane away between Bon Air Road and Hillview led to many public hearings because it's a controversial idea. And the, the traffic calming reports were an important part of how we made a decision on that. In the reference to what the traffic flow really was affected, how it was. So, okay. Anything?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Ju- Julian, I, I know we are doing the traffic study. I think it's about a hundred thousand we said for that one for the North Magnolia. Is there any economies of scales if we do additional traffic studies at the same time? That would make sense to me to, to do them all together as opposed to piecemeal?
I don't think there's so much economies of, of scale. I think this is a big enough study in of itself. You know, I think down the road, there probably would be a plan to do a, a study for the south end of Magnolia. But we thought that the issues were sufficiently different between north and, and, and south that we wanted to split it up this way. And we haven't done one for a while, so we didn't want to do a, a, a whole area. We kind of wanted to use this as a, as a, as a test pilot kind of project moving forward to see how the process worked out with the public and see what the result of this study were. And then, you know, if we feel it was a good process, then we can apply the same process to Southern Magnolia. Or for example, South Alisio is another area that always comes up.
Always comes up.
Should there be sidewalks or should there be bikes or should there be parking? So we definitely have some corridors that could benefit from it. But we would like to, to go through this process with North Magnolia and go through it with the public and, and see what we end up with and see if it's a process that would work for some other areas.
All right, and I'm sorry, the, the reason that I, that I'm bringing it up is, is I know, you know, the wayfinding program, I think, is, is very nice. It sounds like most, I don't say most, the, the feedback I've heard has, has been similar to what Gabe has mentioned, which is traffic issues. And I think we're hearing from the police that due to their short staffing, they're not really enforcing traffic and this all may be related. So, you know, in, in, in trying to have a philosophical conversation about our priorities. I am curious if other people on the city council feel that maybe, you know, something like a wayfinding program may be lower on the priority list than something like a traffic and safety issue. And maybe we should allocate more funds to traffic and safety issues at the expense of some of the other things suggested such as the wayfinding program. Just, just throwing that there for, for other people's comments.
Anybody have a reflection on that? I.
You do. Why don't you start? You don't have to be diplomatic.
It's almost ten o'clock, we have to vote if we're gonna keep going.
Yeah.
The, the wayfinding and the traffic studies are using different funding sources. It's not one is supplanting the other and they will be done by two completely separate consultants.
So. No, I, I understand that, but they're, they're, they're city funds, you know, and, and we have a budget and we have city funds and we have to make choices. And I'm just throwing out there that, that, you know, and I, this is, I guess, the time when we're supposed to talk about, hey, what are our priorities as a city? What do we want to spend our money on? I'm, I'm throwing out there that, that, that we may want to consider. And, you know, maybe we say, okay, this budget's done, we'll do it for next year. But we may want to consider spending more of our resources on traffic and safety. If that's really what our community is asking for.
Yeah, I, I would concur. And I, I mean, maybe, you know, because it's late and also there's probably a lot of complexity here. It'd be great, Julian, if, if there were some way to see what our options are. I mean, I, I have this very amateur notion that if we stick the batteries and the chips back into the Villa Cumbre radar signs, we have data to break the vicious cycle to see what's going on there. But that's amateur, so maybe, maybe you can give us some ideas. Because I, I do know this comes up in, you know, Cape Marin, this comes up in Greenberry, this comes up on Bon Air Hill, this comes up Magnolia. Mayor Office Hours, I probably heard this thirty or forty percent of the time. So I, I do want to reflect what the community cares about.
Go ahead.
Couple of comments, first a budgetary comment. The TOT fund has a fund balance of six hundred fifty thousand dollars. It built up over the close.
Wait, Amelia is making a comment.
Am I saying that wrong? That's what I heard, so I got you wrong.
It is five hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. Yeah, we still have the transfer expenses, so it's not, we haven't closed the books yet.
Okay, so it's five hundred and some odd thousand.
Now we know why we, you hired her. We always thought Kathy was extraordinary and now we know why we have extraordinary number two.
So by policy, you've said what that money's supposed to go for. It's your policy, but the wayfinding proposal is consistent with the policy. So it's not a simple matter for you to say, take that two hundred thousand and direct it to traffic. You need to actually tell us that you want us to bring you an item to override your policy. Because you'd be pulling money out of a fund balance that you designated for business enhancement type activities. So just be aware that, that you, you built the fund structure out of policy and you have to then decide as a group if you want to move policy aside.
And, and I'm sorry, let me, I'm sorry, let me just, just. And explain, because I know this, I, I brought this whole thing up, but, but my thought is not to take TOT funds and use those funds for traffic studies. That wasn't the idea. The idea was looking at this globally and holistically. Yes, this can be used for other things to benefit the business community. But maybe we should talk about what those are and maybe other funds would be used for the traffic studies. I, I know we are constantly moving money from one pot to another and I'm sure there's a way to, to do this. It was just, and again, I, the, the, the challenge is that, you know, we're presented with this like two weeks before the budget. It, it is very hard at this point to kind of move things around. So maybe the thought is, moving forward for future budgets, we can kind of start this maybe halfway through the year philosophically and, and help have a little bit more guidance in, in, in this before it gets to May. And we're, we're at this point, because it, it is tough at this point.
Well, I think a, a, an opportunity for this is to continue to go forward with the North Magnolia Traffic Study. And as budgeted here and has proposed. And then revisit your idea when we do our mid-year budget analysis update to see if, as the funds allocate themselves for other things. Because we still do have some outstanding and unclear allocations, whether there is additional funds to do a secondary study. Because with a study comes data and information and then becomes.
Can I make comment about that too? That was the other part of.
Oh.
I want to urge the council to be very cautious in making commitments to study specific roads and road segments. Because you're not being fair to the four or five dozen requests that your staff deals with on an annual basis for analysis of traffic calming. We have a lot of policies and procedures in place to respond to those requests and engage the neighborhoods. And there are systematic reasons why or why not a lot of these studies do or don't happen. And so you have to be cautious, because if you say somebody came to the dais and came to the podium and told you, I have a crisis and you need to study it. Staff can tell you about dozens of people who have that same comment that accepted the systematic explanation of how we approached traffic calming and didn't come into the council chamber, but had they known that was an option and their study would get funded, right? That you, you've got a perception problem with the community. So you want to be cautious saying one person's perception justifies crisis. And one also be careful, because one person's solution, engineering solution may create more problems. So that is why we would do a study.
Right, but, and, and I'm sorry, just, just again, to clarify, I'm not talking about doing a study on, on South Magnolia right now. That, that wasn't my suggestion. My suggestion was this speaker echoed what Gabe has heard from many people that he's spoken with, which echoes what I've heard from many people, which is that traffic safety is a concern with our community. And, and it was a very general statement of should we consider using more funds or prioritizing safety roads, you know, trying to resolve those issues? It's a general statement, not a specific study or specific road.
Specific area, okay.
Right, that, that, that was, that was all I was saying, is that in a philosophical content, context, do we want to try to prioritize that a little more?
So I think perhaps before you get to that point, Mr. Skinner should be invited to a future council meeting. And the police chief should join him and we should walk you through how this works. Because you're operating in a vacuum of how these engagements occur all year round. And I really want to caution you, the volume is very, very high. I, I hear you that you hear it from your constituents. I cannot emphasize enough how often we have organized a neighborhood meeting and watched the neighborhood tear each other apart about what actually is the problem and what the solution is.
I, I understand.
You know, it's, it's a, it's a path to go down. But it's fun to go down with some information about sort of how your staff has learned to proceed.
Mr. Mayor, that would be a good thing to get on the calendar, on your agendas in the next six months, if you want. Because I think we could all learn something. I think we could all learn the multiple perspectives at which this needs to be analyzed. Because I've, I've had instances where I've had, and I expected it to be rapidly changed. And then when I got in conversations with the police chief, there's just no data to support the claim. So I think it'd be worth us to have that conversation, not right now, but we can schedule it later. So it sounds like we are, we've received the preliminary budget and a proposed capital improvement program. And it appears from, all of our questions have been, most of them have been answered. And we have consensus that we're moving in the direction that seems to be the best for twenty twenty four, twenty five. And I don't, I haven't heard any other feedback given and feel like our questions have been answered. So I think we'll move forward with moving this into a final phase for, at the next meeting.
I guess I would just ask one last time, if there's anything any council member feels strongly they're going to bring to discuss changing. If you want to have that conversation now, we can then incorporate it into the budget we bring.
Yeah.
In June.
I haven't, I don't feel that we have any significant changes. We've had some dialogue about different prioritizations in future budgets or in our midterm review. But are there anything that's significant that you want to have altered? No, we've reached ten o'clock and we have a policy that we have to decide if we're going to move on. Do we need a vote on this?
I think it might be ten thirty.
Ten thirty?
Yeah.
All right, okay.
I think you have half an hour.
All right. We don't need a vote on this, do we, Allison? It was just a review and a recommendation, right?
For these items, you don't need a vote.
Okay, well, thank you for all, I mean, this is always the marathon meetings and always a lot of information and a lot of statistical and financial information. So I encourage if those in the community are watching this later on YouTube, when it's available, that all of these budgets are what we deal with at the city in the spring. And mostly in the meetings in April and May. So you are encouraged and welcome to help participate in these priority settings that we're doing and will continue to do. So that brings us to eight point two, which is business item eight point two, composition of the rent review board. Can we have a staff report on that?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, so the ordinance that's currently in effect for Larkspur for rent stabilization has a process whereby a landlord can petition to exceed the cap if they have justifiable expenses that require them to, to exceed that number. So then they submit an application to the city to exceed the cap and the application is reviewed administratively. Any affected party, meaning the, the landlord or the tenant, has a right to appeal the administrative decision. And those appeals are heard by a rent review board, or the ordinance, and the language is in front of you in the packet. The ordinance says there will be a five-member rent review board, which consists of two owners of residential property in Larkspur who actively rent property to residential tenants, two tenants of residential real property who reside in Larkspur, and one resident who is neither an owner of residential rental property nor a tenant of residential property. And so members of the rent review board shall serve for your terms. So a question came up about whether or not the landlords identified here, the owners of property for rent needed to be Larkspur residents or they could be, live in another jurisdiction, but they own rental property in Larkspur. We had interpreted, interpreted the latter being the point. And we checked with the model that you pulled this recommendation out of, which was City of Fremont. And they do allow people to live outside the city but rent property within the city. They're eligible for, to sit on this board. So the question for the council is to clarify what your intent with this language is in terms of particularly that category. Oh, and the other question is whether you want to have alternates, because we're soliciting applications now.
And are you, are you thinking that an applicant would apply and then be interviewed by the entire city council or by the mayor and vice mayor, like we do other board appointments?
So the mayor and the vice mayor interview sitting members of boards and commissions who are seeking.
Oh, right, we all do the.
And then you make a recommendation with respect to those candidates. Then vacancies are pointed by an interview process of the entire council. So staff's been planning a process to bring you applications for the entire council to interview.
And would a council member, this might be for Sky, need to recuse if they are a renter or own rental property? Would they need to recuse themselves from a decision made on that matter?
I don't believe so, because the appointment to the board doesn't have any financial impact on their, any impact on their financial interest in their specific property. It doesn't result in an increase, if they're a renter, it would not result in a change to their rent. If they're a property owner who rents property, it wouldn't have any effect on their ability to increase rents above the cap. So I, I, we could take, if, if we reach the stage where there is an applicant that the council's interested in appointing who qualifies, or sorry, if there's a council member who meets those criteria, then we could look at it more closely when we get to that point.
And are, are these positions where they would maybe listen to a dispute? Are those Brown Act agendized boards?
Yes.
Okay, so then open to the public to come in and, and listen to the dispute. Okay, so then um, open to the public to come in and and listen to the dispute.
Yes, and the applicants should understand that under the uh, existing Conflict of Interest Code. They would likely have to file Form seven hundred, I think, trying to remember.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's, yes, so they, so applicants will need to understand that there will be some financial disclosures associated with with uh. Uh, being appointed to this board.
And are there other boards that have um, members who may have rental property, but um, not within this jurisdiction? Who are not eligible, or would they be eligible? So let's say there's a resident of Larkspur who owns a property and rents it um, in another city. So they're not, they are, they are a property.
I think that's, I think that's, that's, that's a, that's a, it's a variation on the questions in front of you that that we hadn't specifically asked. But that that you could specify one way or the other.
Those are my questions, anybody else have questions?
And can you say how many applicants you've gotten so far?
Yes, we've received two applications, one from a property owner living outside of Larkspur. Who rents property in Larkspur, and one from a resident who's neither a property owner renting property or a tenant.
I'm sorry, the first one was a land, a property owner who.
They live outside of Larkspur, but the property they rent isn't Larkspur.
I see, I see, okay.
Okay.
All right, I can make a suggestion.
Yes.
I I I would uh, uh, recommend or or support. Um, allowing uh, people who own property and rent that property in Larkspur to be able to be on the board. Um, I would also support having alternates, because this is a four-year position, I don't know how available people would be. So I would support alternates, probably one in each category. Um, I think would be appropriate if uh, if people agreed, uh, where I'd be open to other suggestions.
Yeah, I I think, I think the fact that we only have two applicants and and uh, even um. Vice Mayor ways thought of someone who lives here and rents in another city. That that seems to be less um, germane if there's, you know, rental disputes within the city. But it, I think, you know, when I look pragmatically at what this board does. It brings together the points of view of running a business and staying business and staying housed and being a tenant. And and, you know, bringing those two points of view, you know, the more diverse and robust the group, I think, the better. So so I I don't see any of the restrictions right now as being helpful. So I'd I'd I agree with what's been said so far and and expanding the categories of inclusion.
So the the staff report says the alternate is a resident who is neither an owner or of residential property. What, you're going to interrupt me?
No, no, getting ready to talk.
Or tenant of residential property, so it's recommending one alternate.
That that's how the Fremont model is set up, but we could do one in each category, too.
Okay.
There's not a.
Yeah, I think.
There's no constraint there, I just was making sure you knew what Fremont is.
Okay, so Scott, you're recommending one alternate in each category, um.
Yeah, I I think it is likely that over four years, there may be a situation when somebody's unavailable. And I think the board should be made up of two renters, two owners of rental property, and a neutral fifth person. So I think depending on who is unavailable, they should be replaced with somebody in that same category.
Okay, how does that sound?
Well, I I um, so Scott, I I want to ask the clarifying question. So on the, on the property owner, are you saying they can own property um, anywhere? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Property, I think they should own property in Larkspur, because that's the relevant jurisdiction, the relevant regulations.
And do you, do they, okay. And do you think they need to reside in Larkspur?
No.
You don't think so?
I think if they own, if if they own. Rental property in Larkspur, they're affected by the rent control in Larkspur. And therefore, they should have a voice in how the regulations are are handled.
Right, well, I just find it, um, I mean, just personally speaking, I find it a li- a a couple of ways to go about doing this. Is casting a wide net and then having, you know, counsel through the um, vetting process, you know. We want to attract more applicants. Um, but I I just think that it might be odd to have someone who doesn't reside in the jurisdiction sit on a board. Because I feel like it's um, one of the basic requirements of, for instance, city on council. Or being on our some, our other commissions is being a resident of Larkspur. And does that feel strange that we have someone who doesn't reside here um, making decisions?
I see your point, I I just recall several speakers we had during the course of the. Um, discussion about rent control, who were property owners in Larkspur, lived in San Rafael, or they lived in Kentfield. I mean, they, they still were within the greater community area. But they were um, perhaps outside the immediate jurisdiction. But they had material interests in a property here that they were renting and were concerned about that. So I see your point, I think as long as they have a property here, then um, then they'll be consistent. It would be a consistent at um, direction, what do you think?
I I think, yeah, I think, I think that Stephanie, the contrary argument is if somebody is a property owner here. Uh, and a rental property owner, and um, so they're affected by the regulations. They're be going to be the ones who have to apply if they want to um, uh, go beyond the the cap. To exclude them for being on the board, I think, wouldn't feel right, that they would feel they're being slighted, that they don't have a voice. In the, in the process, and I think they should have a voice, just like tenants should be tenants in Larkspur. And I think that property owners should have a property in Larkspur, I think those are the people that we want to hear from.
Yeah, and I mean, another thought is, is, you know, the ideal candidate is both a resident and a property owner. So I don't think it has to be completely binary, I mean, we would prefer that. But I think we would, you know, be open to someone just being a property owner, because it depends if they have a lot of units. You know, because I'm I'm really not looking so much at the kind of um, uh, comparisons to other commissions. Which, you know, don't have this, well, this is a little bit more like the Chamber of Commerce, where, you know, a lot of people up and down Magnolia Avenue. Who have businesses here don't live in Larkspur, but they are really deeply involved. And if you're like Left Bank or Roolies, you know, which is, you know, such an integral part, I'd like to hear your voice. You you don't necessarily have to live here, so for that reason, I would consider them, but of course, I prefer the resident, yeah.
Well, if we have an applicant, we can, you can make a decision.
Right.
For that.
Right, but I think the question before us is, would we even open it up to non-residents? And I'm inclined to agree with Scott, that that I think, you know, that the fact that they're, you know, being most materially affected on the supply side. You know, their voice is important.
So ring the, ring a bell for you, okay? We try to get consensus. Um, okay, so to wrap up this um, this topic, it sounds like we're in agreement that of the staff report. With the addition of alternates. Um, so that uh, if a, if a committee member is not available. We can still um, engage with the um, needs of the property owners and tenants. Um, con- conflict resolution readily. How does that sound? Now you'll bring this back next meeting?
Oh, I think. I, yeah, so I think the next meeting, we will have whoever's applied in the first round. And I I think we were trying to schedule interviews for anyone who.
Wow.
Had already applied. Um, I don't know if we'll have a full slate, so you may want to continue the process, and I'll confer with the mayor. As we get closer to that deadline, if we want to try to build up more applicants. Uh, and then we thought we'd bring the resolution codifying all this when we uh, bring you the applicants.
Okay, so do you have, you've gotten direction on that?
I have.
Feel good about it, okay?
Yep.
We are down to eight point three. Um, ad hoc committee to review the city's membership in the California Community Housing Authority. And its associated activities in Larkspur. The council is to appoint an ad hoc committee to work with staff in researching this topic. Can we have a staff report, please?
As the council's had a number of public uh, comments at the uh, podium. As well as at the dais from some of the council members, uh, expressing concerns about the city's uh, membership. And the California Community Housing Authority, which is a joint powers authority uh, that uses governmental purpose bonds to acquire. Um, apartment complexes and implement a moderate income program, uh, housing program on the site. Um, Larkspur joined Calcha in twenty nineteen, and subsequently, Calcha acquired. Uh, with its partner Catalyst acquired um, Serenity in Larkspur Landing. And uh, some of the speakers have raised questions about participation in Calcha, but most speakers are concerned about the performance of uh, Serenity. Um, and the sustainability of this model. And so the council asks that we bring this item, so you could appoint an ad hoc committee. Um, that would help work with staff to do the research and bring back a summary report of the issue.
And just to let the community know, and um, is that ad hoc committees are are a tool that we use on the council. To study often um, very specific um, issues. Like last year or two, we've had an ad hoc committee that um, Mayor Candell and I sat on about rent. Um. Rent rental subsidies, um, and then we work specifically with the city staff and some other uh, partners about that. Um, we've had other ones that have been studies um, that we've shared with um. Uh, Corder Madera as an ad hoc committee. Um, so this is a a process we use where um, it allows an opportunity for a more robust conversation between two council members. Um, as opposed to um, having a larger group than that. And also um, being able to work with staff in a lot more detail before making a public presentation. So just to give that feedback. So um, I think I'll ask um, Mayor Candell, do you have a preference? Are you um, you get first choice, uh, I'm going to open it up to um, volunteers for this. We need two council members, and anybody would like to volunteer?
I will volunteer.
Councilmember Andres, volunteer number one.
I was going to nominate uh, Councilmember Andres.
I'm asking for volunteers, it's like when the life, you get on the lifeboat, you need certain people who volunteer not to get on the lifeboat, right? That's an analogy, anyone else want to volunteer?
If nobody else would do it, I.
I forgot like seven committees. I but I'm I'm very interested in the topic, but I think.
Yeah, if if nobody else, you know, I I I think.
It's not my bailiwick, you do it.
Um, yeah, I was going to nominate Mayor Candell, because I think his legal background would be very useful in this instance.
I think he just said he'd volunteered, so we need.
Hi, by default, I will volunteer.
Listen, I've gotten assigned a lot of things by default in my life, so, okay, so it, uh, do we need a uh, motion for all of those? Uh, for that committee, or are we just?
That's up to you, the mayor has the appointment authority, so he could just say that.
He just appointed Councilmember Andre.
All right, I hereby appoint uh, Councilmember Andre and myself.
There you go.
Awesome, and I will uh, leave you uh, you, this new committee to decide when you're going to meet with the staff. Um, I would suspect we'll, I I would recommend we wait until after the budget process is through. Because they've got a lot on their plate right now, but summer sounds fine to me, so.
We've actually already started the staff level research, but the ad hoc committee will probably be the leaders. In terms of engaging stakeholders with us and so having some really important conversations.
All right, and if there's nothing further, we don't have an audience left, it's um, almost ten thirty. So um, I'll take a motion to adjourn, our next regularly scheduled meeting is.
Before you adjourn.
Oh, yes.
Madam Vice Mayor, um, we have been conferring over on the side since very early in this meeting. And since we can't go back and watch the video at this moment, we're not absolutely sure that you took a vote on seven point one. Which is the, the ordinance uh, to change the sunset date for the uh, Just Cause of Fiction provisions. We, we all feel fairly certain, but not one hundred percent. And the city clerk does not have uh, the record of the roll call vote in her notes. So I'm going to just suggest that um, somebody, whoever, if anybody remembers who made the motion and who seconded it, if you could just.
I made the motion, Stephanie second.
Okay.
We don't have to open the public hearing all.
We just need, we just need a record of the vote.
All right, so let's uh, let's return to item seven point one, and which is. Uh, introduction of ordinance ten seventy five amending chapter six point three, and um, Councilmember Paulson.
I moved that we uh.
Pass it, okay.
Pass it.
I'll second, and, yes.
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 Your microphone's off, but I I think you asked me, and I will say yes.
Yes, terrific, so meeting is adjourned for the next regularly scheduled meeting is um, um, June. June fifth, in this same time, same bat channel, that's what we used to say about Batman in the nineteen sixties. And I won't be here, so God bless you all.
Have a good night, everybody, thank you.